Restance to the Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The Bastrop City Council will hold a regular meeting on June 28, 2016, in the city council chambers located at 1311 Chestnut Street, Bastrop, Texas, to consider the following call to order. We have a 100 percent quorum present. Call us to order. We will, if you will, if you're able, please stand. And Councilmember Jones will lead us in the pledges to the flags.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. At your republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Please remain standing, if you can, for an invocation. Oh God, we give thanks for those who offer themselves as servants to the public. For those who stand for office. For those who are elected to office, especially the council members here present. For our staff, whose lives are given to the service of the 8,500 citizens of our community. And above all, for Mike Talbot, who, in his role as city manager in various communities for 32 years, forty some odd percent of which has been in this city itself. We give thanks as he transitions to a role that's very important to us in terms of senior advisory, to provide advice, counsel, information, and support for all that we do until the time that he is set for himself to retire. In the spirit of servant leadership among all people, we see him as a model for what is the most important aspect of civil government. In your holy name, we pray in thanksgiving. Amen. We have one presentation, and that would be an update from Sean Kirkpatrick for the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation. We hear from him on behalf of the corporation once a month. This is the meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, city manager, community, for allowing me to come and give y'all an update on the activities since the last time I saw y'all, a month ago. As y'all know, Willie de La Rosa, Mayor pro tem, has left the board and the board recognized and recognizes their appreciation for his service to the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation over all the years that he has served. Board members Camilio Chavez and Drusilla Rogers took their place on the board. Cam is filling his first full term. He was in an unexpired term and now has been appointed to his first full term on the board. Drusilla Rogers was appointed by this council to serve her first full term as well. And we appreciate them stepping up as community members and leaders to serve on the EDC board. The board did elect a slate of officers at its last meeting. There were no changes there. Steve Mills continues to serve as Chair of the board. Kristy Coke is Vice Chair. Councilmember Gary Schiff is serving as Secretary Treasurer. And then the board also appoints myself as Assistant Treasurer and Angela Ryan as Assistant Secretary to perform those day-to-day duties of the role of Secretary Treasurer. We also had made a change in our BEDC representative on the Main Street board. That, moving forward, will be myself. The board, we asked the board to switch Angela Ryan off that board as our representative, and I'll be filling that role moving forward. You should have a memo in your packet and backup information related to 921 Main Street and an offer from the EDC. And we're available to answer any questions at a later time during the meeting when it's so appropriate related to that. The board, we also asked them to look at a trail expansion from along Childers, Loop 150, from Esq to Highway 71. They've asked for a little bit additional information on that, but it looks like that project is going to go into our fiscal year 1617 budget. And that basically will take the downtown trail system and connect it up with 71 and then on the south side of 71 and provide better safety and public safety from our office. That's a very interesting portion of roadway. We see somebody driving a scooter in that area on the street on almost a daily basis, or at least every other day. It'll also provide access back to the intermediate school and middle school. And so, from at least our perspective as staff, as we presented to the board, it's a good trail connectivity project, as well as a good public safety feature for the community. You'll also be considering later tonight amended and restated Articles of Incorporation. And I'll be glad to come back up and look and address what's going on there and why we're asking to amend and restate the Articles of Incorporation. But the application to do that is in your packet and will be available for questions. We did have a brief budget workshop for 1617. Kind of went through our outline of staff with the board. We did not have the full board at that point, but we'll have another budget workshop on July 11 and go through more detail with them. But we've started our budget process for the next FY 1617 year. And the board, out of executive session, approved the sale of 903 Main Street to David and Libby Sartain. And we're working on getting all of those documents in place and getting that closed as soon as we can. So I'll be glad to answer any questions from the council that y'all have. Otherwise, I will hopefully see y'all later.
Apparently, no questions. I will just say, please tell your board that, I think I can speak with the council and say that we have a wonderful partnership with you all. Thank you very much for what you do. And we'll continue to work together in tandem and make this the best community in the world.
We strive to have that partnership and to build this community and enhance the economy here. And we appreciate what the council does for us. And the board, we will take those comments back and share them with them. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. We have no proclamations, announcements, and information. Kay, and then Mike, if he wants to weigh in. Anything with the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee?
Yes. Yes, I got an update from our city engineer and our city planner just a minute ago. And being technically challenged, as I am. Leslie, can you give the update? I can't find it on my notes. Thank you so much.
If you'd like me to read it, I printed it out. Okay. Mayor, Council, half-assed, who's the consultant that's preparing the plan for us, has submitted Chapter 5, which talks about land use and community image. And they are currently just making a few changes before we send it out to the steering committee. We're real excited to be able to schedule our next steering committee meeting. We're hoping to send the invite out for that tomorrow morning. We've got that scheduled for July 13. At that meeting, we'll discuss that Chapter 5, as well as set the schedule for all the remaining meetings. They've also provided us with Chapter 7 regarding Parks and Recreation. So we'll be sending that out very soon. And like I said, we'll schedule the meeting, the remaining meetings, for the other chapters, which include transportation, cultural arts, and tourism.
Thank you, mostly. Mike, anything else? So, Kay, let me ask you a question. We used to have two council members. We now have one because Doc is now the council. So JC, would it be appropriate for me to ask a question about a second? I think we're like halfway through the process, Mike. Is that right? We're about halfway through the comprehensive planning.
Yes, sir. About halfway.
So JC, could I ask a question about whether we wanted to add another person to that here? Would that be appropriate? So, okay, so in regard to your report, Kay, does the council have any interest in having a, replacing Doc, having a second person on there to work with Kay on that board? I mean, Kay, you got any thoughts?
Yes, I do think it's always good to have two people. In fact, the boards and commissions have a representative and also a backup.
Yeah, I think we decided we'd have two from the council to start with, and then it was you and Doc. So my question is, any thoughts about that from any council member? Anybody want to do it? We don't have to have two, but you-
I hope someone volunteers.
Well, we don't want to make anybody, right? So if anybody wants to volunteer, I think I've kind of, I think I made the appointments before. So if you think about it and you decide you want to do it, and there's sort of nods around that I find somebody that wants to join, Kay, I will make that appointment. Is that okay, more or less? I don't see any no's. So let's, Kay, you run the traps on that, will you? We have an update on the process for choosing a consultant for our DMO process. And the councilmember Jones and city manager Talbot were the go-to people on that. We agreed to let them expedite the process so we wouldn't have to spend an extra meeting or two so we could get moving on this thing. So I'm gonna call on Deborah and then Mike. Mike's got his mic on. Do you want to go first, or?
No, I'll let Ms. Jones go first.
So Deborah, you go first and tell us where we stand.
We met last week, the committee, which consists of councilmember McInnelli, myself, Mike Talbot, Bill Ennis, Lee Harrell, and Mike Djokovic. And so, we chose of the proposals that have been submitted to the city. We had a unanimous agreement on two of them. One from DMO pros, Bill Geist president. The other from Young Strategies, Berkeley Young president. And so what we would like to do now is have a public meeting. I think we're looking at sometime next week, possibly Thursday. That'll be posted. And we are gonna, instead of spending a bunch of money flying these guys down here, we're gonna be prudent. We're gonna Skype them in on a big screen. And so if you want to come in and ask questions, we'll have a panel, which will consist of the committee that chose these two proposals. And we'll have questions. If you have any questions, you'll submit them through the committee. And we can vet these two guys and see if one of these is gonna fit for us. So that's where we are right now.
So, Mike, anything else?
No, I just think it would be important for the public to know that we did go through what we call the request for qualifications because it was important that we selected individuals that have experience in creating a DMO organization. We did receive a total of five responses to our request. And as councilmember Jones has said, after the committee went through them, there was a unanimous decision to have two firms come visit us through Skyscape. I've been in touch with one of the firms this afternoon. They're very open to getting it set up. And I'll be trying to coordinate the times for next Thursday. I think the two firms are extremely well-qualified. Both have done, have experience here in Texas, which was also an important criteria for us to look at. So I think we've moved this down the road quite a bit in a short period of time.
So I want to comment that this is one of those things where sometimes what the council asks for just doesn't work. We passed a motion that was proposed by councilmember Schiff that we would, tonight, vet these folks and on the 5th, vote on them. But there was just no way, given the timing, to do that. So we have, you know, I think, I'm assuming we'll vote on the 12th. So we're one week behind what we agreed to, but it was just impractical. I think that the committee and Mike understood that it just wasn't gonna work. And I know there was a directive to do that, but I hope the council understands that that was the best thing that this committee could do. So we, I think, Mike, is we're gonna work really hard. So those of you that are interested, a week from, two days from now, we'd like the 9th or 7th, or 7th, I think, of July, we will have a, just an informal deal where everybody gets to ask questions and figure out what you want and then tell the council. And then the next Tuesday, the council will vote on who to hire. And then we'll get to moving rapid speed with that consultant firm or whatever it is to create our DMO, to do through the process so we can create a DMO in short term. Okay? Everybody okay on that? Thank you, Deborah and Kay. And the other people that represented, I think you, they were the people that made presentations to us. Everybody had a person representing them. And then, of course, we had Mike present. So item, item C is, I want to say that last week, we had two special meetings. And we had some, for me at least, extraordinary tension at two of those. I think one of them handled pretty well. The other one, I created the tension. And what happened, I want to say, what happened is that the second meeting, I found a bunch of stuff on my desk. And one of them was an important document from a city official that I had not seen the night before, that I thought might have had relevance to the night before. And I admit, I got a little off the reservation on it. And I took it out on Ann. And so, and so as you can imagine, I was down here at 8:00 the next morning, and I talked to Ann. I apologized to her. We talked it out like people of faith talk things out. And once we were good, we said, what are we gonna do to make this work better? So what you have in the packet on, I think it's page 1, is what we worked out. And again, this is a work in progress, as you will hear in a second. We said, look, let's figure out some way where we don't have a bunch of stuff piled up on our desk where we don't know where they came from in a hurry. So what we hope people will do is, when you have something to communicate to council members, please do your best to get it to us before council meeting day. We, except for one of us, we all have emails posted. We have phone numbers posted. You know our personal addresses. You know how to get in touch with us. So communicate with us about whatever's on your mind. If you have a document to give it to us, please give it to us in advance. If you need to get it through the city secretary, she will distribute that to us. But we're better off not getting some last-minute stuff if we can possibly help it. If you're on the agenda, this is all spelled out on page 1. I think it's page 1. If you have something, if you're on the agenda, please get, by the deadline, get the information into the city secretary so she can put it in the packet. So we can all see it for four days so everybody in the community can see what's going on. And we'll all be copacetic on that. If there's something that's urgent enough, that it needs to be distributed to us on the day of the meeting, communicate that to the city secretary. She will consult with the city manager and me. And we'll figure out, you know, if it's urgent enough, then the city secretary will tell us, we have a spot in the agenda, where she will say, council members, I have distributed the following to you. I think it's very important. We've agreed that you need to look at it. Whoever the presiding officer is, will give the council time to review it. Make sure that we're not just flying blind. And then we will move ahead from that point. As I said, it's a work in progress. Since Kay, Ann and I worked this out on last week, we have a couple of potential changes. One of them was yours about the timeframe. Would you, would you? We're working on making sure the timeframe works for us to have plenty of information. So you're working on that. And then Mike had, Mike, you had an idea that you've used in other places, so.
Does paperwork up here. And one of the things that we're gonna try is, if you give us something to give to the council before the council meeting, but it has nothing to do with an item on the agenda, we're just gonna put all that in an envelope with each council member's name on there and just tell them this is either for a future council item or a communication from a citizen. Please read it at your leisure and get back with either Ann or myself. And that way, it won't get mixed up in the rest of the papers and get misplaced or something like that. And then if there's a particular item that is on the agenda, we're gonna try to coordinate handing it out at the time that agenda item comes up.
Right. And, right, and so that's the thing I didn't mention, the last thing that Mike said. So if you, if you have something that, that's, you're on the agenda and you need to distribute something, that's the process, you know, that we've talked about so we can figure out how to handle it. It will provide great communication for us. It will keep us from wondering what the stuff is that we have on our desk. And so if you, again, we don't want to not have information from folks, but we want to have it in a timely fashion in a way that doesn't distract from what we're doing on the council. And I think that will, Ann and I agree that, and I think we've talked to Mike about this as well, we'll make it better. And it will be a lemonade out of the lemons that I cast at Ann at the last meeting. And she's been very gracious to me.
Last minute request to stay inside.
Do we have, do we have something on that?
Mayor, prior to the meeting of June 21, being gavelled into order, you chose to quiz and chastise me for the distribution of a document. You indicated that a policy exists about giving information to city council members and that you, as mayor, had to give permission prior to information being distributed to city council members. You shared that you had discussed a procedure with past mayor Orr shortly after your election. I'm not aware that any such procedure was shared with the public. I submitted an open records request to receive a copy of the policy document that specifies no one can hand out any material without the mayor's permission, the policy you were referring to. Today, about 1:30 PM, I received a response stating we do not have such a policy in our office at this time. I see an agenda item with your suggestions on this issue, including a requirement that any information a citizen wishes to submit to city council be provided by noon on Wednesday prior to the meeting. I will point out that the agenda for tonight's meeting, on Tuesday, June 28, was posted on Friday, June 24. It would have been impossible to submit any information that would have been relevant to the agenda items two days before knowing what the agenda items actually were. Your comment to me that you did not give me permission to hand out any information indicates you believe yourself to be the sole individual who is allowed to give permission to share information. That decision should not be at the sole discretion of the mayor or the city manager, as your newly-created policy suggests. Citizens have a right to their views being heard and should not have their freedom of expression determined by the mayor. I will also point out that the meeting of June 21 did not have an agenda item for citizen comment, which is why I distributed the information. Every city board meeting has to allow for citizen comments. Why should city council meetings be any different? Every city council meeting, a public meeting, should include an opportunity for citizen comments. The document I distributed included a call to you and city council to become familiar with city policies and procedure. Since you publicly rapped my knuckles about a policy that doesn't seem to exist, I deserve an apology. And a commitment from you and the council that you will seek correct information about running Bastrop before you make stuff up to chastise and embarrass citizens.
I apologize to you. And I did talk to Mayor Orr about this. And there may not be a policy. I think that Ann and I will be talking about that. We have begun a process right now that will provide what you want. I don't think there's anybody on this council, certainly not me, who doesn't want information from the public. We, you don't have to have citizens' comments posted for you to comment on an item that's on the agenda, which you have just done. So we will always allow that. So maybe we can sit down and talk sometime and find a way that this works. I would appreciate very much your input. And I think that we do need to come up with, if we don't have a policy, which I thought we did, we need to come up with it because I think it will, it will follow the kind of reasoning that we've been talking about between the city secretary and city manager and me. And we would love, I'd love to have any input from you all about how we can best handle that. So Bonnie, I apologize if I spoke out of turn. And we don't have a policy of that, and I misunderstood that. But I assure you that we'll get to the bottom of it and figure out a way that we deal with this in a better way. We have now item, Dan, do we have anything to distribute that is of importance to the council at this point?
Yes, we do. We have two items that were previously emailed to the council. These are courteous copies that I am passing out tonight. One is a copy of the 1832 farmers' market letter to the editor. And one is a status update on recent council action concerning joint marketing agreement between the city of Bastrop and the Hyatt BMC.
So are those, are both those items on the agenda somewhere? Or just the first one is not the second one?
The first one, not the second one. The second one was a wrap-up from a previous meeting.
Can I just ask a question?
So would you distribute those? Or do we have them?
No, you don't. You do not have them.
I'm sorry, Kay.
I'm getting a bit confused here. Was that a citizen's comment? Because if it is, we're not supposed to be-
No, no, she was, this is posted on the agenda. And she was responding, this is, what do we call it, JC? When you, on a posted item, you want to speak? What do we call that?
Is it, is it a comment on a posted item?
Yeah, so she commented on a posted item.
Okay.
So, Ann?
So we're good?
Ann?
Okay.
What's next? I mean, you want to distribute that to us?
I'll distribute these, and that's all I have.
Okay. Would you please do that? And I will say to the council, one of those is on the agenda. So when we get to that point, I want to pause and allow y'all to read what we have. Now, we, it was emailed to us, but do we, we have a council member that does not have email. So we gave that council member a written copy. Is that correct? Thank you.
Thank you.
So the first one we received is, and do we have a copy for the press of these things? I always want to do that. And we, this is something that we received, but it's a backup copy of it. And we will, I'll give you time to read this when we get to this item on the agenda. And the other one is for, Mike?
That was the direction that you gave-
For the future?
Yes. And the direction that you gave me. I just wanted to show-
This is, well, July 12, correct?
Right.
So this is reference. Okay. So, thank you, Ann. We don't have, Mike, do we have any items targeted for future meetings we need to discuss?
Next Tuesday night, we will have a budget workshop along with capital improvements planning session for next Tuesday night.
Okay, thank you. Item 7, we, as I think the public is aware, Mike has written us a letter of resignation. I think it's retirement, as of the end of August. And we have, last Monday, the council talked about the best way to transition with that. And I was authorized to talk to Mike to try to figure out a good plan to move ahead. On page 2 is the agreement that I worked out based on the conversation that the council had last Monday. And Mike and I, Mike agreed to that. And we have put that in the packet on page 2. And we need to formally agree to this. And I want to give, you know, Mike first shot at commenting.
The mayor and I met, and as stated on the agenda tonight, the day-to-day operations at the end of this week will be turned over to Chief Adcock. Initially, he'll have a temporary office here at City Hall. But around 1st of August, we'll move into the city manager's office as I transition out. And what the mayor and I talked about is some of the major projects that are confronting the city that need to move forward. And that's what I'll be spending my time on. The following is a preliminary list, not all-inclusive. But the excess ranch pit is a very important project. Been going on now for over a year. Tonight, we have it on the agenda, but there's still a lot of work over the next month that needs to be done on that project. It's budget time again, and we have to get a budget before the council in accordance with the charter. We've had preliminary meetings with West Bastrop Village and the council. We've had preliminary meetings with West Bastrop Village and the council regarding the construction of a wastewater plant on the west side of the city, as well as their pro rata share, and we're trying to get that into a wholesale wastewater agreement. We still have our water permit pending before the Lost Pines Groundwater District. Two weeks ago, the council was given a presentation of the wastewater study for the west side of the city. That is a very important project, and I'll be coordinating a follow-up presentation for the council to look at some different options related to how we may want to proceed forward with the west side of the city. That has already been mentioned tonight. The city transitioning into a destination marketing organization has been a very high priority for many groups and individuals, and I'm just going to assist in coordinating so that we can keep that ball moving forward. Earlier this year, we started some capital improvements planning. Clearly, in light of the recent rains, that has expanded greatly to include several drainage projects. We've already prepared some preliminary, preliminary cost estimates of some drainage work that the council will have to take under consideration, also to stay on track with a comprehensive plan. Want to get Ally D. out and bid hopefully in the next, by the, before I leave. And the HUD grant shelter from the county, if you're not aware, the council has decided to move that project to the north area of town. We're doing the environmental assessment because it's a federal project, and we'll be opening up our request for proposals for architectural services this Thursday, and it'll be on the July 12 agenda for council consideration. And so we've got quite a few projects that have got to stay on task.
So we've got two months to take advantage of your expertise, information, and many years of work in the role that you have. I'm mindful of the fact that, I think it's like 32 years that you have been a city manager, and about 43% of those years have been here in Bastrop, so that's pretty remarkable. I want to comment on two things. We, Mike is, had always told us that whenever, or he told me at least, I think he told the council, that whenever he decided to hang it up, that he would give us at least a couple of months of time for transition, and he has followed through on that, and I very much appreciate his doing that, as I'm sure the council does. The other is, the one thing he wouldn't agree to is, we said, "Mike, what we want to do is, we want to keep you on retainer for 12 months following September 1, and we want to pay you $2,000 or $3,000 a month to, to provide information for us, for the interim or the city manager, so that we can mine your vast knowledge of this community and what's been going on." And he said, "Nope, won't do that, but what I will do is, for free, I will provide whatever it is that you need. I will, I've always done that with every community that I've served, and I will do it for you all." So Mike, I want to say thank you for that, and we, we felt like that putting you on a retainer would make the, the next city manager feel a little more comfortable calling you, but we will tell whoever that is, and of course, for the next two months, Steve Adcock knows for sure to call you about that, but we'll tell whoever's down the road that you're a team player with us, you love this community, and you're available for providing whatever. So I can't tell you how much I appreciate that. So, you want to stand?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Well, he's not going away.
No.
Right now, and I want to say this, that the one thing I told him that he couldn't negotiate about is that the, he's, he has, there's four living mayors of Bastrop. Mike worked with all of them, and those four mayors are going to get together and plan the jam-bangest thank-you party you ever seen, and I told him he had, he couldn't say no. So we'll put that together at the convention center sometime in the next couple of months, and we will invite the entire community, especially those that have worked for Mike and worked with Mike on the city council in all those many years. So stay tuned for announcement about that. So we need a motion to approve...
I have something to say.
Oh, okay. Okay, go ahead, because we need a motion on this at some point. I'll let you speak first, so go ahead.
Firstly, I want to know who wrote this, this agreement up and put it in the, in the pack?
Mike and I agreed, I wrote, I wrote up a draft, Mike and I adjusted it, and we agreed to it.
Okay, we need to have names on these things that go in the pack. This is part of our history, and I have...
So can we, or can we put in the record that Mike and I worked it up and agreed to it? Mike, is that okay with you?
Fine.
So please put that in the record, okay?
Okay, I've got something else to say.
Sure.
Now that we've got that settled. This con, this document constantly refers to the council. The council finds essential, the council will relieve, the council appreciates, the council follows his assessment. So this coun, this document is written as a statement from the council. Well, it is not written in my name, and I'm referring particularly to this sentence. "The council will relieve Mike from the health-threatening stress he has experienced by shifting his role to a less stressful, but immediately more effective and needed set of functions." I'm going to have to read this because I am so angry. I am so very, very angry. I'm not going to stand for this. This will become an official document. It will be part of the official history of this city. Our history needs to document the truth, not this attempt to whitewash the truth and to take out the pieces that are least embarrassing to the mayor and to the city council. I don't want to see any reference to Mike Talbot's state of health or health-threatening stress without full disclosure of why his health has suffered. Our city manager resigned not because he was in poor health, not because he was not able to cope with the stress of his highly stressful job, but because of the actions of the mayor and the city council. The reason he resigned, according to his letter, was this, and I quote from his letter of resignation. Wait for the train.
Stand by until the train goes by.
Ongoing council activities, decisions, and directives over the past nine or 10 months, which have intensified greatly in the last several weeks, have unmistakingly demonstrated to me that it is the desire and direction of the current council to very actively involve its members in the day-to-day management of the city, including such responsibilities as management decisions relating to staffing, departments, utilities, and other administrative affairs. Regrettably, over the past year, the gradual erosion of the home-rule charter segregation of responsibilities between the council and the manager, under the council-manager form of government adopted by Bastrop citizens, has culminated in a level of mental and physical stress that is seriously affecting my health and well-being. A level of mental and physical stress that is seriously affecting my health and well-being. Think about that for a minute. This is a man who has worked tirelessly, honestly, and with great integrity for the citizens of Bastrop for the last 10 years. Seriously affecting my health and well-being. Ongoing council activities. Seriously affecting my health and well-being. That is the truth of this resignation. It is not about Mike's health. It is about what is affecting Mike's health. Ongoing council activities. So I will not have this whitewash. I will not have this misrepresentation, this disingenuous sleight of hand that makes the council look so warm and cuddly, so concerned about Mike's health, that we're going to, quote, "We're shifting his role to a less stressful, but immediately more effective and needed set of functions." But even in that little sentence, there's a bar. Less stressful, but immediately more effective. So what's the implication? That our city manager is less affected than he could be right now? I am so angry, angry at the reckless disregard some people on this council have had to the consequences of what they are saying and doing. There's a toll. There's a toll in human lives and reputation, a toll in people's well-being, a toll in the morale of our city staff, a toll in the morale of the wonderful volunteers who have been such a critical part of making this community what it is, and a toll in people's livelihoods. I'm angry at the hypocrisy I see here on this dais. People standing up and publicly applauding the person who has been caused such stress by their actions that it has caused him to resign because it was affecting his health and well-being. I'm angry and I'm tired, tired of people playing at being attack dogs on the dais for their political supporters, whoever they may be, and then rushing off after the meeting to tell the very people they were attacking, they didn't really mean it, it was just for the cameras. Just for the cameras! I am angry that city staff can be treated the way our city secretary was last meeting. I am tired of the mayor and council members being critical of how much we spend on legal fees and yet being so ignorant of the laws of Texas and the charter, which we follow, that they repeatedly make proposals that are illegal. I am angry that good people who have worked loyally and hard for this community as employees or volunteers are treated with such callous disregard by members of this council as the Main Street Board and the DBA were treated at the last meeting, when the council wouldn't even recognize the hard work that the DBA had done. I am angry and I am tired. I am tired of being angry. Can we please, for the love of God, stop playing political games with people's lives? Can we please stop relentlessly pursuing personal agendas regardless of the damage? The only analogy that comes to my mind when I think of the actions of some of our council members, especially in relation to this city manager and our city attorney, is Sherman's march through the South in the Civil War. He got what he wanted, and he left nothing but devastation in his wake. This extraordinarily destructive behavior needs to stop, and it needs to stop now. I will not agree to this document that has been written in my name because it is not the truth. This, thank you. This document needs to be, whatever legally can be done with it. I don't know if it should be shredded and rewritten as the truth. I don't know if it should be documented, that I do not believe this is the truth, and I want it, I want the truth documented. That's all I want from now on.
JC, can, can, can we talk in general terms about the conversation we had on the Monday night meeting and executive session? In terms of, of the result of that meeting and so forth, is there a way we can mention something?
Speaking of the Mike...
On Monday, on Monday night? I mean, I want to, I want to refer to council, I don't know what I can, can I say anything about that? I mean, in general terms?
Only in the very most general terms. Executive session conversations are confidential information of the city and cannot be disclosed. General terms about conversations that you and Mr. Talbot have had are permissible, but not confidential.
Well, I guess I've not, not had a, I just, I want to, I just wanted to give the, first of all, Mike, I want to give you a chance to, to respond to the conversations that we've had in terms of what Councilmember McInally said, and see if you can shed any light on, on what she's saying. Or if you want, you don't have to, but if you want to, I'd appreciate it.
I, I don't know what I can say other than what I've said before and what I said in my letter. What's most important to me is for the betterment of this community. That'll always be at the highest of my priorities, and that's why I feel like I need to no longer continue as city manager, because I want to put the community ahead of what's ahead of us. But I will always be here to support this community.
Let me ask you, Mike, did I speak correctly when you and I sat down and hammered this out and we agreed?
Yes.
Is there, is there something, can I ask that question? Can I ask, I mean, can we, can I ask that question? Is there something wrong with that? I just want to give Mike an opportunity to respond to the conversations that we had because I was, I was asked by the, by the council to talk to Mike, and I did that, and this is the result of what we did.
That is correct. I just know that in 32 years of being a city manager, I've seen different scenarios play out, and when the city manager becomes the issue, the city manager doesn't suffer, the council doesn't suffer, but the community suffers and the organization suffers, and I'm not going to be part of anything that is going to cause the organization to suffer or the community to suffer. I just will not be part of that.
Well, I want to say that the remedy, I think, Kay, for you, is that we have this on the agenda. Mike and I have presented it. If there's a motion to approve it, and there's a second, then you can offer an amendment that will, that will amend it as, as you have described in your conversation. I think that's the legislative way for us to proceed. Am I, is that a way to go, JC?
I believe that would be correct. The alternative would be for Ms. McInally to make a motion to strike that sentence and substitute it with what the city manager had written in his letter.
Yeah, so if we got, if we got the, a motion on the floor, then we could amend it?
Yes, sir, to make it, in her view, more accurate, to reflect the circumstances.
Yeah, so, so I will, I will say, Mike and I have agreed to this deal, and I'm going to see if anybody wants to move that we accept this agreement as Mike and I worked it out. All right, we just speaking, all right, so I've got a motion from Councilmember Peterson II, from Councilmember Schiff, and so I want to, let's see if there's any general conversation, and I'll call on Kay to make an, to offer an amendment.
Do you want to act on it as-is or...
No, 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 Kay's going to have an opportunity to offer an amendment. So my question, is there any general comments before, before I call on her to, to offer an amendment?
I think that we ought to offer it as-is and then attach his letter, you know? I mean, I don't know how much more specific we can be than that. Not, not take, not take his comments out of context, but just attach the whole letter.
Anybody else? Okay, Kay, do you want to make a motion to amend this motion?
I, I'm not quite sure exactly how to do this. Can you, can you tell me how I can best make this document reflect the truth?
If I understood you, and I'm not speaking for you, so you'll have to interject yourself here.
Okay.
But the sentence that was, that did not reflect what you understood to be accurate was the sentence that read, "The council will relieve Mike from health-threatening stress he has experienced and shift his role to less stressful, less stressful but immediately more effective and needed set of functions." And so I assume you would want to strike a sentence that you think is inaccurate. So you would move to strike that and then insert whatever portions of Mr. Talbot's letter of resignation you felt more accurately reflected why Mr. Talbot was leaving the city.
Okay, so I move to, to strike. The council will relieve... The council will relieve... The council will relieve Mike from the health-threatening stress. Is that it? I can't remember. I can't find it. Sorry.
Second paragraph.
I'm sorry?
Second paragraph.
Second paragraph.
Second paragraph, third sentence.
Do you have a copy for... Do you have... Here, this on this? Do you have this, Kay?
Yeah. I'm sorry. I'm so upset that I can hardly stop shaking here.
Well, take your time. Need to pay attention to the...
Okay, so I would like to remove... I've got so much I want to remove.
Well, just go for it.
I would just like to say this. I would like to move that the council recognizes my opinion that this document... that this letter that was constructed by the mayor about Mike's resignation does not reflect the truth and refer instead to Mike's resignation letter, because there's just too much to say. Can I do that?
That's not an amendment to the letter. The council could act on the motion, which is on the floor, to accept this plan of transition, and then you can make another motion regarding your feelings, if you would prefer.
I gave you Willie's letter. I mean, that... I'm sorry. I need to...
I need to consult with JC for just a minute, please.
We'll stand in recess while...
I want to be sure I get this right.
We'll stand in recess while the city attorney consults with Councilmember McAnally. I'm trying to find it, Willie.
If you can give that...
I know it, I know it.
Do you and Ken not come up with that together?
It's in the pack. Did you take it out of the packet?
Pardon me. That was mine.
I'll give you a moment.
Ken, I would like to ask a question.
We're in recess until Councilmember McAnally has a chance to consult with the...
Well, before we go any further, I'd like to ask a question.
Yeah, well, when we get... When she comes back, I'll recognize you.
Okay, I think the simplest and best way forward is just to strike this whole sentence.
Please pay attention. We... Councilmember McAnally has the floor. She's about to make a statement.
I would like to simply strike this sentence. I think it will do the trick. "The council will relieve Mike from the health-threatening stress he has experienced by shifting his role to a less stressful, but immediately more effective and needed set of functions." Can we just strike that, please, and leave the rest of the letter as is?
So your motion is to amend the agreement that has been moved by what you just said?
Yep.
So is there a second?
A second.
Discussion. I will ask, Mike, does that go pathetic with you?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mike's good to go. No discussion? Kay, you want to say something else?
No.
I think we're ready to call the roll on the amendment to the main motion.
Councilmember McAnally?
Yes.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Del Rosso?
Yes.
Now, we're back to the main motion as amended by Councilmember McAnally's amendment. Is there any conversation about the main motion? Okay, I think we're ready to vote. I mean, we understand that the item in the packet, the agreement that Mike and I worked up, is amended by the striking of the section that Councilmember McAnally proposed and was voted on. Otherwise, it's as is, and that's what we're going to vote on. Everybody clear? Please call the roll now.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember McAnally?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Del Rosso?
Yes.
Thank you all. Mike, one more time. I'm looking forward to the opportunity to mine your... M-I-N-E. Your expertise, talent, and history of 14 years of working with us to help us transition towards where we're going.
You bet.
We... I think that... How many people are here about the flood hearing? So I've been requested by a council member to move directly to that, so I'm going to do that. We'll come back to these other items later. This is item B1. We will conduct a public hearing or a town hall discussion as we agreed to do or we were advised to do at the last meeting, the last regular meeting, by some people that presented to us under Citizen Comments. A public hearing, town hall discussion, to receive public input from the citizens of the city of Bastrop regarding the efforts of the major... Sorry, the effects of the major storm event on the citizens, which occurred on May 26 and 27, 2016, in the city of Bastrop, including discussion of the flood conditions which occurred at residences and businesses in town. Mike?
Yes, Mayor. You asked it to be placed on the agenda for tonight. I just would like to point a few items out to those of you who are here tonight to speak on this issue. First, we have received the FEMA designation. But because we've received the FEMA designation, does not mean that the money is going to come to the city. The money goes to the families and individuals who have been impacted by the floods. We set a table up out there in the foyer. We've got a list that is fairly comprehensive, but we may have missed a few people. So please sign our form out there, because we will forward that to FEMA. But most importantly, there's also an information sheet out there. If you feel like that you've been impacted by the flood, you will also need maybe to initiate the contact with FEMA. Don't wait on FEMA to come to you. And they will schedule a time to come out to your residence and look the situation over to determine if you will be eligible for FEMA assistance as it relates to your residential structure or business. Now, as a result, because of the magnitude of the flood, there will probably... I'm sorry. There probably will be some funds available to the city, which we will have to apply for, but tonight... I'm so sorry. But tonight, I don't know what shape or form that is going to take. And so it'd be premature for us to say that we're going to go after this or that, because at this point, we just don't have a good idea of what FEMA will make available to us. As an example, a few years ago, after the fire, FEMA made available to the city mitigation funds to remove debris and things that would be fire-oriented. One of the initiatives that we undertook was we got 100 easements from '95 to '71 for Gil's Branch. This last summer, we went out and cleaned all of the brush and stuff. I know it doesn't look like it now, but we did clean out a lot of brush and debris, junk and stuff. There were several tons of debris that were removed from Gil's Branch. We could not have done that project if you all hadn't given us the easements and we had not received the funding from FEMA. There was some FEMA dollars left over. We still have approximately 71 to the river that we have to clean out. We have received funding for that, and I hope within the next month that we will begin that process. Thirdly, we did listen to all of you a few weeks ago when you came and spoke to the council. We've already initiated an evaluation of Gil's Branch. We've identified areas that could be potential impacting the flow of water coming down. We have come up with a preliminary estimate that we'll be discussing with the council next week. It's more than just the Gil's Branch areas. There are some other related infrastructure items that come into Gil's Branch that contributed to the problem on the night of the 26th and the morning of the 27th. We've also looked at Piney Ridge. Keep in mind that anything that we do regarding widening Gil's Branch or any drainage basin, widening it or lowering it, requires a U.S. Corps of Engineers permit. We just cannot go out there and just do it. We have to get a permit from the Corps. And that will require some level of environmental analysis that will have to be done. We have done it before, and we're willing to take that challenge on again, but it does take some time to put all that together. That's why we started after we heard from you two weeks ago, identifying areas that we felt were certainly going to be looked at by the Corps. And as the mayor and I spoke before the meeting tonight, we're going to try to encourage the Corps to come down here and see some of the areas that we've identified that contributed to the flooding as a result of the large amount of rain that we received in that short timeframe. Again, we still want to hear from you tonight, but before you leave, if you would just fill out a card, that would be very appreciative, because we don't want to miss anyone. And secondly, there's a flyer out there in how to get in touch with FEMA. Please make sure you pick that up so that you can make contact with FEMA and get on their list. And in closing, if you have any problems with FEMA, if you would either give myself or Ms. McCollum a call, we will coordinate, making sure that FEMA gets out there to visit with you.
Mike, thank you for that comprehensive report. As Mike mentioned, we had a number of y'all come under Citizen's Comments and talk about this issue, and we were not able to respond. I think y'all understood that. So Mike and I have gotten this posted as soon as we could to give you an opportunity to come and tell us what you think and for us to be able to talk back to you, which we couldn't do before. So I know that... I'm glad that Mike's given it this much thought. I think we're all very, very concerned about this. I would say, maybe it's not only Gil's Branch that's the issue here. So when you come up to speak, I hope you will... I know you've listed your address, but please tell the council where you live in town, so we'll have some idea what your issues are.
And one other thing I'd like to point out. We will be putting a map up here in just a few minutes. And please don't take it as the final map, because we're still gathering data, but it shows every house that we have received contact from, from the citizens of Bastrop, that were impacted by the flood. And as the mayor said, this map will show you, it's more than just Gil's Branch that was impacted by the flood. And there it is. The red represents business and the yellow represents residential structures. And as you can see by that map, it... And we're only looking inside the city. But that's the areas that we have documented that were severely impacted the night of the flood.
Okay, before we start, Councilmember... Our Mayor Pro Tim.
Mayor?
Go ahead. Yeah, your honor.
I appreciate the information Mike gave, and he alluded to areas, Piney Ridge and the Gil's Branch area, but... And I'm glad you mentioned the fact, because I was going to mention the fact as well, is that the people, when they come up to speak, that they give the addresses that they live on, because Gil's Branch affects a bunch of streets, Fayette Street, Farm Street, Pine Street, MLK and so forth, but not to forget water coming across 95 that affects the Hill Street and Pecan Street areas. So they're... And not to forget those areas as well in our conversation.
And I appreciate that, Mr. Del Rosso. And we have addressed a cost estimate under the CIP program for the area of 150, where we saw a tremendous amount of water coming across.
So I would just comment, following up on that, that Councilmember McAnally, who lives on Main Street, was flooded as a result of this. So it's a lot of issues. So, okay, so let's get going, because we want to hear from you. We have a rule that you only get three minutes to talk, and that's just something that we do to try to maintain the fact that we're not going to be here until, you know, 4:00 in the morning. So Mayor Pro Tim will start the clock when you come up, and he will let you... He will give you a sign that's 30 seconds left, and he'll let you know when you're done. We appreciate very much your tolerance of that limit. I've got these in the order in which I received them, and I will call on you as you go.
Good evening, Mayor.
Can you move that up a little bit? I want to make sure we can hear you. Thanks.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I live on 2006 Hill Street, right in front of that city pond. And it's twice already that I've gotten flooded out.
Pull that up a little more. We're having trouble hearing you. Thanks.
It's twice already in the year that I've got flooded out, right there on Hill Street, What's the city going to do about that pond now?
So the pond, meaning which... Okay, which... Tell me which pond.
Right there in front of your city warehouse. Right there by that warehouse y'all have.
The big pond on the north end.
Right. It's already twice in a year that we've got it flooded out.
I think we'll get a... Some point, we'll get an answer to that. So I don't know. Can we answer that tonight?
That's what we were told last time.
No, no. Let me see if Mike has an answer. Let me go with Mike, and then I'll go to Willie.
We're trying to analyze the water that flowed in from Piney Creek, down that drainage divide into the lake, and we're looking at possibly putting in a smaller retention pond ahead of the Hill Street retention so that it will control the flow of water coming in there under these severe rain events.
Have you seen it? What it really raining and...
I got pictures. I was out there. I took pictures. And so...
And Mr. Battello, the Mayor Pro Tim wants to comment.
I think he has just...
Mike?
I think the city manager was starting to address. I think it'd be appropriate at the end of this conversation that we let our Public Works Director, Trey Jobe, he has an idea on the pond that you're talking about and the recommendation he may make to the council in the future of what... How to address that situation with that water and how it drains and what we can do to that pond to make it work.
And let me comment that our next item after this, after we hear from everybody, is to see if there's any action that we want to take. So that would be the sort of thing Trey could come up and talk to us about what he suggests, if that's okay with Mike, and we'll talk from that perspective. So I want a dialogue as much as possible, but, you know, in terms of what we're going to do is on the next item. But right now, we need to hear from y'all, and if we can dialogue with you when you ask us questions, we'll do that. So that goes for everybody. So, okay, keep going.
Well, after it fills up, you know, it's going to overflow. And where's it going to go? Right into my house. Every time. It's already twice. Last Memorial Weekend and this Memorial Weekend. You know? So what's the city going to do?
And I think we're going to do the best we can to work on it, and we'll talk when we get to the next item.
That's what we heard last year, too, so we need some answers now.
I appreciate your comment.
Can I say something?
Deborah?
I think something, too, on some of these houses that are going to have a propensity to flood, we might even want to think about buying out some of those properties.
Well, I think...
Thank you.
Let me say, we've...
I mean, it's just something to think about. There's some properties that we might need to think about.
And let me just point out that we have an...
Can I just say, I think this is out of order?
We have an...
I'm really... May I consult with the attorney about this for just a minute? I don't think that statement was very helpful.
Let me say... Let me rule on this, and JC can tell me if it's out of order. We have an item next up that's going to be talking about the ways to mitigate, what we can do. That would be the appropriate time for Councilmember Jones to mention something like that, but not now. We're having a hearing.
I understand, but not now?
Yes. So it's okay, but not now. So we're hearing from folks. If you ask us a question, I think we might try to dialogue with you, but when we get through with the hearing, we're going to talk about what can we do and what action items we can have, who we direct, what we're going to do. We have an opportunity. That's the way we do these. We have a hearing, and then we have an action item following. That's... I'm sorry. We do that routinely. Jane Campos. You might pull that down a little bit.
You saying I'm short?
No, I'm saying, I'm saying the mic, I'm saying the mic's too tall. That's what I'm saying, Jane.
Okay. I'm Jane Campos. I live at 1306 Farm Street, which also encompasses 1304 Farm Street, which is the old casino. I had two and a half feet of water in my house, and it was caused by the impervious structures, impervious ground covers that y'all have put in from the Judy Fay Wilhelm Center and the high school and rerouting the water with a big wooden fence right to the corner of Farm and Fayette Street. The railroad track area, ditch area, has not been dug out where it should have been dug out, creating a dam and causing all the people on Farm and Fayette Street to be flooded. And there's no reason for this. Gil's Branch needed to be cleaned out. Your so-called improvement of Farm Street put in poor structurally holding ponds that have fallen over, doesn't have a large enough drainage areas for the water to drain off, and the people's lives were put in danger caused because the city did not plan this appropriately. I've been here since 1960, never seen anything like this. One other time, it flooded, but not to the degree that it did here. Now, the city has on Fayette Street a six-inch pipe on one of my neighbor's property going across Farm, Fayette Street into the ditch where the railroad track is. The railroad track ditch, I can drive through it, come on. I mean, there's, it needs to be cleaned out so the water. We need drains into those holding ponds that are large enough for me to walk out of and into so that the water can flow where it needs to flow. It shouldn't all build up right in a corner. The railroad track creates a big, huge dam. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Jane.
I have one other thing I'd like to mention. Because of this flooding, our light bills are going to be ridiculous. And I think the city needs to realize that we have had to have humidifiers, air conditioning's running 24 hours a day, seven days a week, windows open, windows closed, and the, I want to thank the city of Bastrop, the police department for their excellent job of coming and contacting to making sure that my neighbors were taken care of because I called to tell them to get these people out. They were flooding on Fayette, and I, I could go upstairs. They couldn't. And I think the Bastrop City Police did a wonderful job and has followed through with a wonderful job. But the electric bill is going to be a very, very important part of this thing because these people are going to be impacted as well as myself. It may take my whole amount paycheck to pay that bill. And I think there should be some kind of a rebate or something thought of to consider the people that have been caused this damage. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Thank you. We're filming this, right? So we, you know, anything you say, we're going to be able to go back and document what you've said. So we won't, we're not going to miss a word. We don't have to worry about the city secretary writing down verbatim what you're saying. We've got it so we can review it. Thomas Jefferson.
My name is Thomas Jefferson. I live on 1305 Newton Street. That's south of Highway 71 where they're doing the construction. And I live probably about, approximately about 80 to 100 feet away from the, from the drainage ditch. And I grew up in that area. Raised up on 1305 and 1303, and now in my life, 56 years, I have never seen anything like this here before. And the cause of that is all the businesses right up above us with the CVSs, the Jack in the Box, and then the new tax office. When that water comes off that hill, it's moving so fast. I have never seen anything like that before. And so, and everything dams up right there at the railroad tracks. And if you made them drain pipes right there at the railroad tracks, it's two big drain pipes, they're 43 inches by 43 inches. So when that water's coming down that hill so fast, that water have to go somewhere. And what happened is start damming up, then start bagging up on my son and my home. My son's been flooded twice, and this is my first, this is our first time getting out of home flooded. And this time, it got so bad that my son, that my grandson called me up, said, "Grandpa, our house is flooded and we can't get out." And he was crying. So what I did, I jumped in my truck, and then my wife, she had to get the kids out the house because they couldn't even get out the house, and my son called 911. And you know what they told him? "We'll get there when we can." You know, "We can't get there right now." So my wife said, "Get them kids out the house. Let that window down in that storm door, and we'll get them kids out." So I had to pull my truck down in his yard, and the motor was starting because of the high waters. The water was over four feet because the water didn't have nowhere to go. You know, it couldn't go through the 43-inch drain pipes, so what, so everything was just bagging up. My whole property from Newton Street to Jasper looked like a freaking lake in the backyard. And I have an eight-foot, eight, eight-foot picket fence, and the water was halfway up, four, four feet. So we've got water coming down Jasper Street, MLK Street, and I forgot the street that's always there at the end of MLK. And everything is coming down Newton Street. The water comes down Jasper, and then it splits off, comes down Newton Street, and then it goes down the drainage ditch. And then the property that's right across MLK at the end of Newton Street, it like during a, it like a, you have so much water, okay. No, but water was coming from everywhere. But anyway, what I want to say is, with all the new businesses up above us, the drainage pipes at the, right there at the railroad tracks, that's, that's where everything stopped. Matter of fact, the lift station was underwater. That's how bad it was. And it was waist-high. And I have never seen anything like that before. And I just hope that y'all do something about it.
Thank you very much.
You know, and I say, if you don't, it's not, don't have anything to do with the 100-year flood. Like I said, I lived there now for 56 years, I've never seen anything like it. It all stops at the railroad track, and that's, y'all are going to need to work with them guys, try to get something done.
All right. Thank you very much. Richard Kindred.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Mr. Tabitha, I want to tell you thank you for all you've done and all you, you are willing to continue to do. Ms. Brown?
It's been a pleasure working with you as well. I, I think you may be next, I guess, so I just want to say thank you anyway. And Ms. McAnally, thank you for all you do as well, for trying to defend those who need to be defended. I, I, I didn't come up here for that. I came up here to follow up on our discussion the last time I was here. And when I suggested that we have a drainage study and suggested that we do some maintenance and suggested that we also have a public hearing, I went home and thought about the fact that we've had two floods and multiple council meetings, but no one on the council saw fit to call this meeting. Just want to park that right there. Just think about that. We had this disaster, and that's what it was. FEMA came in, so it's obviously was a disaster. But nobody took the time to say, "You know what? We need to check on these people because we had boats floating around and trying to get people out of houses." This, this, one of the things I do want to point out is a couple of things that I think that should be considered. A moratorium on building on the north end of town that flows down to the south, including your shelter that you're talking about building right next door to the detention pond that Mr. Batello just told you does not work. So I, I know there's discussions about the shelter, there's discussions about design and coming up next week. May want to table that until we get this water problem solved because the Clemmons right down the street on the opposite side from Mr. Batello, they, they flooded as well. The, the other thing, and I'll say this and I'll walk away because it's, a lot more will be said by others, I'm pretty sure. This budget workshop that you all are getting ready to have, I strongly encourage you all not to put drainage on a bone package. Reason being is, we, we broke this, it needs to be fixed, but we shouldn't be charged twice to fix it. Right now, right now, people are spending their little pennies trying to put their lives back together and their houses back together. That's one dollar, that's, that's one dollar. They paid taxes, that's, that's another dollar. And now you're talking about a bone package, you're going, that's going to be three dollars. So I'm saying, pick up the, pick up the Smithville Advertiser and read the article on the front page of the Smithville Advertiser that talks about how the city manager found a way and said, "I will make sure that the taxpayers do not have to pay for this drainage." And that's what I figured that you all can do here.
Are you talking about the Smithville city manager?
It's, it's an article on the front page.
Of the Smithville Times?
Smithville Times, yes.
Smithville Times. So the Smithville city manager? Okay, keep going.
Am I correct on that?
Keep going.
All right. So I suggest that you all get a copy of the Smithville Times, read that article, and find out what he did to make it work. And he says in that article, "I don't think the taxpayers should pick up the burden of the drainage of the city." And I think that's, same thing applies here. We've already paid for the drainage, we just haven't got it. So let's fix it with not adding additional tax base to us, additional dollars to us if we can. Thank you.
Herb? Herb Galtz.
Can I buy something?
Can you do what?
Looking for a bit of time, so I have more time.
Uh, no. Sorry. That, that's not our rule. We've talked about this before, I'm pretty sure I'm right about that, Herb. Am I right about that? JC, you get three minutes, and you can't borrow somebody else's time. We, three minutes, right? I mean, isn't that our rule?
That's not, that's not a policy.
Well, keep going. I can, I can extend your time if I want to, so let's see what you got. Talk fast.
Thank you very much.
I'm starting, everyone you want to start.
Are you ready? Say ready, set, go, and Willie will start the clock.
Go. Now, Mike, unfortunately, it's too little, too late. The bottom line is, the first thing I'm going to show you is Piney Creek. Piney Creek runs just on the other side of Lake Bastrop. That is an overflow dam for Piney Creek. I took that picture two days after the flood. I went down to Riverwood Road, and it was less than two feet under, the, the water was less than two feet under the bridge. That is an overflow dam, it is huge. Maybe Gary Schiff can buy it for $4. Now, the other thing I'm going to say is, the drainage area is a capacity-constrained system. This is the ESTAT report published in 2011 by engineers and architects. And the highest priority area for the city is Gil's Branch is capacity-constrained because the channel is no longer large enough to safely convey storm water runoff through the city. This condition is a combination of lack of maintenance along the corridor and upstream urbanization, everything you said. To address the maintenance of the channel, immediate steps should be taken to clear the corridor of woody debris, garbage that is built up, constricting the flow capacity of the channel. The effort should be similar to the work done along the convention center, but with greater effort at restoring the natural habitat. It is understood that a majority of Gil's Branch is located on private land, which requires an easement for access. However, the city must get past this hurdle to address this public safety hazard the current channel presents. They proposed, they had three proposals for the city to, to, to use. The number one proposal was a high-flow bypass pipe. This approach would construct a high-flow bypass pipe parallel to the natural channel to convey flows that exceed the capacity of the channel. The parallel system should not disturb the existing channel habitat. The high-flow bypass approach is similar to the project and also the one. Here you have an official document in 2011 that said it was a public safety hazard and it has not been addressed. Now, I went to Gil's Branch.
Let me, let me kind of stop you a minute, Herb. This, we'll work on. Is this something that we have, you're saying we have in our?
You not only have it.
Mike, Mike, we have that in our, we have, we don't need to get your copy, we have that.
You have that.
Okay, keep going, sorry.
And you were on council, Gary Schiff was on BEDC, you weren't on council, but you've been on council for 26 years when that was published. You were on council when it was published. Okay, you were on council when it was published, and of course, Mike was the city manager.
Okay.
This is the published document.
Okay, we've got it, and we can review it. So keep going.
All right. Now, let me say this. I put a lot of work into this. This is Gil's Branch at Cedar Road. As you can tell, I took them not that, well, during the summer, well, I took, I think I took about the same time I took the other one over there at Piney Creek. But you can see the fan and the screens and everything else. What you see with Gil's Branch is cement almost viaduct dumping into a little creek. Now, this.
While you're pausing, Herb, how, how much longer time do you need?
Uh, three minutes.
All right, I want to, I want to honor you for getting in the arena and running for office because we need more people to do that, and I'm going to honor you by saying, "Let's go for another three minutes."
I appreciate that. That was a lot of work, both times.
Yeah.
Anyway, this, this is, this is Gil's Branch up by the movie theater. It's hard to see, but you see a sewage pipe blocking it right across the top there. This is Gil, Gil's Branch at Bernard's after the movie theater. What's interesting about that is you see all the foliage right there in front of the, one of the, I'll call them aqueducts, whatever you want to call it.
What, when, when did you take these pictures?
I took them, let's see, May, June, right after the flood.
Okay.
Sometime in June.
Okay.
Louis, the last couple of weeks.
Thanks.
Okay, this is at Pine Street. As you can see, we've got a little bit of a, hmm, beach going there. And this is, this is right up around Emile. This is a drainage into Gil's Branch. All over Gil's Branch, there are a number of drainage systems, including the Bucky side up there, La Hacienda and all that, and also on the backside over there across 2171 from Jackson Street. This is a drainage that goes, that is here. This is where Gil's Branch is up by Emile, is doing a whole lot of winding around, and that is dumped, is draining into it at the same time. Now, here is one of my favorites. This is 2171, and that's a tree. And that tree's in the middle of Gil's Branch, almost touching the highway. This is my little marsh underneath it. This, this is interesting. You have a road that crosses Gil's Branch back there out by College Street, behind College Street or, what's the name of that one road? Newton, 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 by Newton. Anyway, so here we've got, I'll show you what it is, but we got a, we got a big drainage thing coming into Gil's Branch. That is Gil's Branch. That's a cement drainage thing dumping into Gil's Branch. Somebody's put a cattle guard across it, and that's a pipe that floated down the road, down the way. And also, it's, the road, it's, it's actually a little bridge road, it's completely, it's just a big dam right now.
Temporary.
Yeah. What is it? The cattle guard?
Stop this cattle coming up in the, uh, it's not a weak channel.
Well, that's good.
To the city, to the city.
Well. Temporary or not, that, that's not the only issue. Okay, this is where College Street drains into that point I was just talking about. And this is that. So this is coming from College Street, dumping into Gil's Branch on the other side. That's a lot of, that's a, you have a, a number of huge drainage that.
Hey, Herb, how close are you to finishing?
Well, I'm, I'm just about there.
Can we, okay.
Yeah, yeah, here's Bucky. That goes into Gil's Branch. There you go. There's a, that's a good one. Oh, yeah, it didn't work. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, I love that one. That's huge, huge. Where's it go? Goes to Gil's Branch. That's where it comes out, and this is going in beside it. Now, running parallel to 95 with the new construction. And this is what your little Gil's Branch looks like on the other side going around. And so, my thing is, this, I, I believe what should have been done based on 2011 report, what was already known about in the comprehensive plan in 2000 to 2020, was not addressed, and that is the reason why we had so many. that is the reason why we had so many problems.
I'd appreciate if you'd share all this stuff with our staff, everything you've got.
Could I answer a question to Mike, ask a question to Mike to answer one of his questions?
Sure.
And it'll address maybe Mr. Jefferson. Mike, on 95 and 71 where the construction's going in, you know, they're coming down with those feeder roads into College Street on both sides. I've noticed that they're laying a concrete pipe which crosses the street and the metal tubing that's going directly into Gil's Branch.
Yes, sir.
Now, the area that you identify with a tree in it, that was put in, that channel was put in by the state, but it's never been maintained by the state because the city, the city has gone in there twice and cleaned it out. And today it needs cleaning it out, and I'll guarantee you probably in the next two weeks you're gonna see it cleaned out. It needs to be cleaned out from there all the way back up to Chestnut Street to clear out all the deal. But Mike was right when he said if we gotta go in there and widen it or deepen it, that involves a core of engineers. But right now, it definitely needs to be cleaned out. But the channels, all the channels that you're identifying were put in by the state.
So we're, okay, but.
We authorize this impermeable stuff. We authorize most of this drainage into, I know that for a fact, Gil's Branch. There's a few things that the state have a part of, but if you knew a tree was growing and you've been in council 26 years, and then you turn around and say the feds didn't do their job or the state didn't do the job, we should have been on them. And we were on them. And now we've got this.
You gonna allow me to answer that to him? I'll answer you. I'll answer you if you start allowing to face me and let me answer you. Don't come in here and point your finger at me that I haven't addressed.
Excuse me. Do not talk to a citizen that way.
No, he gonna talk to me. We're gonna, we're gonna deal with this, we're gonna deal with these things when we get to the next item. But right now, we're hearing from citizens, and, and it's not exactly a question we're responding to. You can respond to that when we get to the next item.
Let me finish my statement, Mayor. The reason that these things, and he doesn't have any idea if I've gone to a public works director or Mike Talbot to say, "We need to do some work at Gil's Branch." The problem with the problem today that we have, and he mentioned it, it hadn't been a priority of past councils to go in there and do that work.
Let's, let's move on with Derek Van Gelder.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilman, Councilmembers and City Manager. I live at 1009 Pine Street, which is at the corner of Pine and Hill. And I've gone through numerous floods here, and never have I had anything more than about an inch of standing water in my front yard that went away. What Herb just came about and talked about was the fact that this drainage in this area will not work if the drain system is not cleaned out. I'm a civil engineer. I've done projects before where you work with the idea of how you contain flow and everything else. But if you have trees and debris and everything else in a channel that is supposed to be able to handle water, the flow of that water will be restricted substantially. And then when you start having a serious flood, you get all the additional debris in there, which is gonna catch up on the, catch on the trees, the cattle guards and other things like that. And so you've got a serious problem that this area now is prone to floods because of the fact that this area has, the drainage area has not been cleaned out, has not been properly taken care of. So what that does is affect, is that now my house, if I ever try to sell it, I have to now disclose that the house is flooded. It cost me $20,000 to dry out my house. I had 54 fans and five dehumidifiers in my house, and I only had four inches of water in it. Every one of the carpets, all my hardwood floors are all gone. And it is quite a shame that I think, in the way that a simple little thing of cleaning out drainage ditches is, would all it would be taking to be done. So the responsibility does fall upon the city to be able to do this and keep it clean so that, it wasn't the river that overflowed, it was the, the Gil's Branch in that area. And it, for the amount of water that came in, yes, it was a serious flood and everything. But the fact is, if those drainage ditches had been cleaned properly, there is no reason why the flow would not have been able to continue to go on down without flooding the number of homes that did flood. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. Belinda Williams.
Good evening to everyone. I have seven properties that I would like to talk about, so I don't know if I could get 21 minutes. No, I'm just joking.
No, just tell us, you wanna give us, we're starting the clock, you can tell us where you live, where you have or not.
8111 Martin Luther King, the Macedonia First Baptist Church, 701 Fair Street, 703 Fair Street, 1103 Fair Street, 1207 Fair Street, 1209 Fair Street, and 1213 Fair Street.
Thanks.
Okay.
Go ahead.
In response to what City Manager Mike Talbot said earlier regarding the easements, I did receive an easement, and the city was going to do some work on Gil's Branch. And what the city did do was from Farm to Chestnut Street, and the work stopped at Chestnut Street. They cleaned, drained, everything. Macedonia First Baptist Church sits at Pine, right there on Pine Street. So from Pine all the way to Martin Luther King, Newton, Fed, no work was done in that area. And I'm hoping that some work will be done real soon on, in that particular area. Okay? And regarding Fed Street, and I do have pictures as I stated the last time, 2012 to 2016, the road is washing away, the ditch is still as it is. Okay? And I firmly still believe that the city is negligent. I hear that the railroad is part of the problem, that may be, but I've never seen the railroad dig that ditch from Cedar Street all the way down to Newton, back in that area to College Street. The city would at least drag that ditch, dig that ditch, and it was at least four, I think four feet deep, at least that much. And if, like I said last time, if cars got in that ditch, Potswich Wrecking Yard may a-killin', getting those cars out of that ditch. I'll also say, I firmly believe that regardless of what FEMA may do, I firmly believe that the city should financially compensate all of the people whose houses flooded due to their negligence. If it's no more than $5,000, you could never pay us enough for what we've lost and what we will continue to lose.
I appreciate your support, but when you applaud, we can't hear the speaker, so go ahead. I'm sorry, would you, would you go back to your previous sentence?
Well, I firmly believe that the city is negligent, and I firmly believe that the city should financially compensate everybody whose house is flooded during this flood and even the last time. We're still trying to recover the church from the last one. Nothing was done from that time until this time. It's, well, it's the time that they did the work from Farm Street to Chestnut. Right now, it's a little too late. Whatever you do, we've already lost what we lost. And I guarantee you, we're gonna lose it anyway. So I'm hoping that the city would do something to compensate us. And then, the last thing I'm gonna say is, based on what Councilman Willie Delarosa said, he said that this has not been a priority for the city. What is it gonna take, people to lose their lives? That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Glad to see you here.
Hello. Good evening to the council members. Uh, I am up here to talk about Mount Rose Baptist Church, which is on Emil Street, but the address is 507 Otterville Street. They have never, I was not there when the church was first built, but I saw pictures of that. Now, the dirt is there with the foundation, and even if, not this past rain, but the rains in the past, and it's, it hadn't been just a heavy, heavy downpour of rain. When the Jack in the Box, not Jack in the Box, when Popeye's was first built up there some time ago, uh, we had red dirt just all over in the schoolyard, all over in the parking lot, all over in the church. You couldn't see nothing but red dirt. And that man had a meeting with us, and he told us, "Oh, we watched that. It was always in the flood zone." No, it was not. Anytime you have concrete and anytime you have asphalt, that rain does have nowhere to go. And the only thing it is, was up there was old house and then, I didn't live on that in the town, but my husband lived on that in the town, and they didn't have anything flooding at that time. And he said it was a drain pipe over there on the end of College and MLK there, but it, that drain pipe was just a false drain pipe. It is not, it was not a drain pipe. The thing was closed up for years and years, and he swore up and down that it was there. But you know what? I think that people that are coming in here that are building things here in Bastrop need to ask the foundation, people that are already here, what is going on and what had happened. And that is for Mount Rose Baptist Church there. But I wanna go to the north end of town where I was born and raised. That water comes off of 95, and they said a long time ago, it will be fixed. And they call it a pond, it was a tank, Jenkins Tank, that's what that was. Because I remember that water flowing in on that end, and they said they were going to fix it, but it never was fixed. And as far as Gil's Branch there, they said that, "Oh yeah, we came in and we fixed that." No, you didn't. You came down and cut down a couple of trees, and everything from Bucky's up there ended up in that drain. So you know right now, if it rained again, that everything is in that drain now, well, where's the water going? Right down in somebody else's house. And all of that is unnecessary. And before everybody comes in and say something about that, I have never seen, you don't need an engineer for this, you have never seen water go up here. Now, how can water travel up here? Now, we live right there, it said, they said, "Oh, you're down there." We're the only one in their little neighborhood, we're the only house right there. Uh, we have another lady live on Emil Street right there. But they tell us that we don't have to worry about this because the water is not going to affect us. Yeah, it might not affect us right now, but let me tell you one thing, if my husband and I, when we did that house there, I wanted it on concrete foundation, and he said, "No, we gonna do it on pierce." I am glad that he did do that because when we looked at our back door, that water would have been up to our knees. And if we had have been on a found, a concrete foundation, like he said, we couldn't have stayed there. And the only thing, and thank God, is our underpinning and the driveway washed out. And I just have to say this to you all, before you do something, ask the people that has lived here a lifetime and know what's going on. And I agree with the man that live on Hill Street because I used to live maybe about three doors down, and I know how that runs. Thank you.
Thank you. You wanna use this, or you got, Pamela Aldrich.
Good afternoon, everyone. Again, I am Pamela Aldrich, I'm speaking for the land on 702 MLK, also for Ms. Madison on 706 MLK. We two live right there on MLK, and what separates the two houses is that ditch right there, uh, what is it, West Bridge, whatever y'all wanna call it, whatever that bridge is called. And right now, as I said before when I first came here, my, our land is washing off. We have very little land from our house to that bridge. Now, we pay taxes, but remember, when you tax us, remember, our land is washing away. And yet you want us to still continue to pay whatever y'all say the land is worth, and that's not right. Another thing is, Adam Madison cannot even probably, may not even be able to live back in the house, I don't know. You know, this water has never been like it was this last time. I'm, I'm 60 years old, and I don't mind saying my age, but I have never, ever, ever seen this water like it was this last time. And people that have lived right there, it's, it's just not the same anymore. When the city comes out to clean out that area, they make sure that they clean it good enough for the school. They clean up on that side where the school is, they clean up. This last flood left a lot of debris on top of the bridge, you know, the road of MLK, and left a lot of mud, water, everything. They cleaned that up so the buses could go through for the school. And also, the debris that was left across that land from 702, that was cleaned up. Nothing has been done on that other side where Ms. Madison and we stay. And something needs to be done. Remember, we are the ones that put y'all in office. And remember that we, when election time comes again, remember, we are the ones that can say yeah and nay, but you know, it might be one or two of us that might not stop you from getting in office, but do think about, we little people, we have to think about where we came from. And that's all we have down there. I was born and raised at that, in that house. My family was born, all of my brothers and sisters was born in that house down at 702. And it's just washing away. I have a brother-in-law that lives in that house right now who is very disabled. And as Ms. Williams said, what does it take for someone to die? We've had to call EMS, uh, the fire department, police department, twice to get him out. And that wasn't a pretty scene. Now, the next thing I wanna talk about is.
We're down about 15 seconds, three seconds.
What are y'all planning on doing about the, the ground that's right there? We need cement or something built up there to stop the erosion of our land.
We'll address that on the next item.
All right. You will address it on your next item?
We have an item, we're hearing from y'all. When the hearing is done, we'll talk about action, and we can talk about that. And if you, if we don't address it like you want, you can fill out another thing, come talk to us again. But right now, we're just hearing from y'all.
Yeah, you're hearing, but nothing is being done.
Let me, let me, let me try again. The way we have the agenda set up, what we do, friends, is we do a hearing, and then once the hearing is done, we close it, and then we talk about action items. So I'm not saying we're not gonna address what you're saying, we're not gonna do something, but right now, it's not the time for us to address that. We'll do it at the next item, which is as soon as this is over. So I hope you will stay for that, and if you wanna ask something under that item, you're free to, anybody. Barbara Wood.
Hello, my name's Barbara Wood. I live at 800 Magnolia. We purchased our house on April the 13th, well, we moved, we moved into our house on April 13th, and on, no, we moved in on May the 13th, and then on May the 27th, we were flooded. So we lived in the house two weeks before we got flooded. We were very lucky because we didn't have carpet in the house. We have a cement floor, so ours wasn't bad. But we have, we swept it all out. The only thing that we request from the city is for somebody to come there and dig us a ditch in the front because there is no drainage in, in that whole city block on our side. There is a drainage across the street from us, but there is no drainage on our side of the street. There has not been any drainage in there from what people have told us, ever. They said that side never did have drainage. The people that built this house in 2013, when they put the driveway in, they put it straight across, they did not put any culvert in because there was no drainage there for them to put a culvert in. And that's all we request from y'all, is to put a culvert in and put us in a drainage ditch.
Ma'am, I apologize, I was writing down what you said. What's your address again?
800 Magnolia.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anna Wiley. Did I pronounce that right?
Hi, I live at 102 Pine Ridge Drive, and my house has been flooded six times since 2011 because of the water that rushes off the creek at Pine Hill. And this was addressed when it happened the first time. The city council said it was my fault that my house got flooded. And now, all of a sudden, it's the city's fault because of the drainage, because they're not cleaning out the drainage? Who's gonna pay for my house? I've got mold in my house. You talk about Mr. Talbot having mental anguish, you know, disabilities and stuff. My husband also has disabilities. He cannot work. He is 100% disabled. He is a hundred percent disabled. It's not just Mr. Talbot and I don't want nothing to happen to him, but it's not just him that is suffering from this. Everybody here that lives in Bastrop County or the city is suffering. I don't understand, what is it going to take? Like she said, is it going to take somebody to die to get something fixed here? My husband was out there with this last flooding, digging a ditch in my front yard, two foot deep to keep the, the water out of my house. And it got in there five inches deep in my house already again. We've had to gut our kitchen three times. We have now have concrete floors because we've lost every floor that we put in the house. It's nothing but constant repair, all because the city says it was our fault that we got flooded. What is it going to take? I've got letters from Mr. Talbot and the city council saying it was my fault. I've got pictures, repeated pictures of my house, videos of me walking through my house kicking water. Every time I get flooded, I call for the city to come out and help us. It wasn't until this last time, they come out and put sandbags in my front door to try to minimize the water coming in my front door. Why did it take that long for that to happen? This is the only time it's, anybody has tried to help us with the city. And I'm not blaming y'all because some of y'all were not on the city council at that time. I just hope that y'all can find it in your heart to help these people that live here. Thank you.
Let me ask you a question. Do you have a, I don't remember ever the council saying anything to you. Do you have a, can you give us a copy of?
I'm gonna give you a copy of everything.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to see that and put it for our record. Johnny Washington.
Good evening, Mayor. City manager, council? Yes, I live at 2008 North Pecan Street and I had about a foot of water in my house. And FEMA told me today that they weren't doing anything for me.
What'd you say?
FEMA told me today that they're not doing anything for me. But anyway, my question is, it's not all about Gil's Branch. Gil's Branch, yeah, I discussed this long before the flood happened. I would like to know the engineers and who did the calculation on the water that come off that hill for Bucys. Uh, it was a very poor engineer that was done. And the piping that I saw went into that line, we can't put everything in Gil's Branch. I live on the north end of town. That water coming out of the six feet drain line and it was gushing up like a Gaza out of six feet. And, uh, Mr. Mike, it might be time for you to go because you haven't did anything down on that end. You know, and, and, and you've been here long enough to do some of those problems and get them done. Only time we see council on that end of town is for voting. And that's been a problem for a long time. I got six feet drain, it's right side of my house, wouldn't even take the water. And one of the city contractors come in and mowed a field across from me and all that grass directed the water right in my front door, in my front door. So I know you're not going to do anything, but I just want to let you know, it's some people across the track. Because we getting water from the school, we getting water from the, uh, event center over here, we getting water from everywhere. And the water from the school is coming under the track, we can't stand it down there no more. So what we're going to do is just go ahead and learn to swim, I guess.
Johnny, we're gonna, we're gonna address that on the next item. Esther Washington.
I'm Esther Washington. I live at 2406 North Hill, but I'm not here to discuss my address. It's all about my church. This is the second time that our church has flooded.
Which church?
Macedonia First Baptist Church at 811 MLK, right across the street. Now, I heard, uh, Mr. Talbot say something earlier about Corps of Engineers need to come in and do something as far as getting Wells Branch widened or deepen. What is it going to take for the Corps of Engineers to come in and get that done? We've been flooded twice. Like I said, the second time it flooded, not only did it come from Wells Branch, it came from the holding pond that's right over here on the other side of the city hall. That water overflowed and came in the front door of the church, pushed the front door in and came right on in like it belonged there. All of those water dumping, and we did not, mind you, we've been over there for a hundred and something years. We have not had any flooding in that church until Bucys did all of their water that comes into Wells Branch that runs right behind the church. We have water coming off of Highway 20 that comes right down into Wells Branch, that comes right, 21, that comes right behind the church. The apartments that behind Bucys, all of that water and all of that cement that has been created on that hill comes flooding down to Wells Branch. And Wells Branch cannot hold all of that and it comes right in the back of our church. Now, it's construction being done at 71 and 95 that I see a pipe putting in that's directed that's going to come down the street in front of Mount Rose. That's all going to dump into the street and flood us. What does it take for the Corps of Engineers to come down and see how they can widen and deepen Wells Branch? Because just cleaning it out is not going to do it. It's too much water dumping from too many different areas, too many different places that cleaning it out, oh, that's, that's good. That'll help right now. But deepening and widening Wells Branch is the only thing that's going to help us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bernetta Talbot.
Good evening to the mayor, city council and city manager. My name is Bernetta Talbot. I live at 1207 Fed Street and I've been here in Bastrop all my life. And I can remember the worst flood here in Bastrop was the early 61. I was five years old, right down here on Martha Luther King, right next to this ditch. It used, it was a man in a, in a boat, came to my mom's house and it was five kids at my mom's house at that time. And he asked us, asked my mom, do you want us to get your children out there? My mom said, if it come up one more feet, y'all need to come get us. Since all the new business has been built, which we might need them in Bastrop for employment and whatever, since that had happened, the last flood, it came up to my steps, right above my knee, this past May. In March, I retired. In April, I paid off all my bills and my car. In May, I lost everything, but I'm still standing. So when it came into my house, I was scared. And I told my sister, if I ever need a man, damn it, I need one now. So then this man, we call, I called 9111. 9111 did come and rescue me and my mom. She lives at 1103. And this policeman, his name was James, and we walked to my mom and it terrified my mom because when she stepped out of her bed, because the phones, once the flood came in, the phone lines, the landlines dropped dead. So my mom didn't have no communication in and out, but I had my cellphone. And so James walked me to my mom's house and got us out. And, uh, the fire truck came and rescued us. I thank y'all very much for that.
Thank you.
But, um, what I'm saying is, I live at 1209 Fed. For last two floods, every time it rained, there's a drainage system right in the middle of the road. And that drainage system comes over here into the property that I live on. And I have a lake, which Jane lives right behind me. She have a lake, 91209, we have a lake. And when everybody can walk into their yard after the, the rain and stuff, we have to wait three to four days before that water desор. So I have ducks, them coming in, cracking, cracking and everything. And then the city has came before and all they did, just look. And I told my sister, I said, I need to cover up this drainage so if the water won't come in this yard. They said, Ned, if you do it, you get a fine. I said, okay. So now what I did now, I invested me on some rubber boots this time. So now all my shoes won't get wet. So I'm not going to say what y'all need to do because everybody here know what y'all need to do. You know what you need to do. I'm just saying, somebody just need to do something. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're gonna, I'm gonna close out the, the public hearing and we will see what we're going to do under item B two, uh, which is consideration discussion and possible action regarding citizen input on item B one, the impact on flood conditions that were experienced by citizens of Bastrop during the storm event. Storm event that occurred in the city of Bastrop on May 26th and 27th, 2016. Oh, Mr. Sanders. No, I don't have that. Uh, I, I'm gonna go back to item B one. The city secretary tells me somehow we lost a, uh, uh, form from Johnny Sanders and tell us who you are and what you done here and, uh, is that it? Oh, it's B two. Well, Johnny, hang on. You've signed up for the item I just called, not for the previous one.
No, Gil's Branch.
Well, you, you want to, you want to talk about the hearing or you want to talk about the action item?
First of all, I want to talk about Gil's Branch.
No, no. You want to talk about it under the, the hearing that we just had or do you want to talk about it under the action?
I'd like to talk right now.
Okay.
I'd like to talk right now, whatever item that is.
Okay, I'm gonna go back to item B one-
Okay.
-for one last thing because I, we must understood this.
Thank you.
And Johnny Sanders is recognized.
Thank you. I'm Johnny Sanders, been here, uh, all my life. Uh, I just want to talk about my friends that are here tonight on Gil's Branch. I want to talk about the flooding. We'll talk about other flooding later on, but Gil's Branch, as y'all know, the lady who talked for Piney Ridge, starts in Piney Ridge, comes down, flooded out the Petersons on 95, friends of mine, comes on down, winds through town, comes down E-mail. We know about Gil's Branch and we know, I've talked to Councilman Del Rosso, I've talked about, I've talked to several y'all, we know what happens. We've neglected Gil's Branch. It hasn't been cleaned out, hadn't been maintained. So we can talk about the Army Corps of Engineers and place the blame somewhere else, but the truth is, things silt up when they haven't been cleaned out. So to dig down, if you're saying you have to go to Gil's, to the Army Corps of Engineers and dig down, what needs to be done, and as history will tell you, before they built the dams on the river, Gil's Branch flooded because the river blocked up Gil's Branch. Gil's Branch historically has been known where it starts and where it ends. And to tell the people here tonight that FEMA can't help them, the city of Bastrop, I was on the city council in 78. I'm an old man. I can tell you Gil's Branch, it's known where Gil's Branch starts and where it ends. What needs to be done, these people don't want to hear about FEMA talking to them about their floods at their houses. They want to know that you're going to maintain Gil's Branch. And what are you going to do to maintain it? And are you going to put equipment in there? Are you going to wait on FEMA? Are you going to wait on the Army Corps of Engineers? Are you going to tell them right now and up on the, Johnny Washington's place, some on the north end, that detention pond, same deal there? Bucys drainage, you go up to Lowe's, Home Depot, all the way down, it's a drainage issue the city hadn't addressed. And you're hurting a lot of citizens in Bastrop. Most importantly, right now, you're hurting my friends that live up and down with Gil's Branch. And don't put it on a bond issue to relieve them because you're telling them you can't help them until you get a bond passed. Thank you.
All right. I'm, I'm officially closing out the hearing. Item B two is consideration discussion, possible action regarding citizens' input on item B one, the impact of flood conditions that were experienced by citizens of Bastrop during the storm event that occurred in the city of Bastrop on May 26th, 27th, 2016, as well as Gil's Branch drainage basin within the city limits of the city of Bastrop. Uh, before we, before I call on Mike, I want to say that, uh, we combined an item that council, that the mayor pro tem asked for and that second thing about as well as Gil's Branch drainage, she had a separate item and we decided to combine those two together. So this is a, a double item. Willie took the initiative to talk about the Gil's Branch drainage basin and we're going to combine it into this because it seemed to make sense. And so, Mike.
Well, um, based upon what we heard two weeks ago, um, we have started analyzing Gil's Branch and the other major drainage areas within the city. Um, we've developed some preliminary cost estimates, um, and based upon the numerous comments we've heard tonight, um, we may go back and we will go back and relook at some of the, uh, high points that were raised tonight, either at Gil's Branch or the other drainage areas. Um, and then potentially revise, uh, the plan that we're developing to address the flooding along Gil's Branch. Whether you want to hear it or not, I have to disagree with Mr. Sanders. Federal law prohibits the city from going into Gil's Branch and removing, removing silt until we get a permit from the Corps. And we have to do a drainage study. We have to tell them what we're going to do. They're going to have to approve it. And if we do it, we'll be, if we don't do it without the permit, we will be in violation of federal law. And secondly, because it's a navigable waterway, we're also going to have to pay for mitigation when we open that drainage up. And that's what we're working on right now to get those elements put together.
I want to say, I don't think there's any question on anybody's, I don't think anybody would question that the council is very, very, uh, uh, seriously concerned about what we've heard. And, uh, if it's somehow our responsibility, I think we all want to, to try to fix it. So, um, I mean, I, I don't know how detailed we want to go into this conversation. I think Gary's got a comment, but I just want to say, we need to come up with some kind of action item that addresses, at least is a beginning point for addressing, uh, these issues, whether we've neglected in the past or not, that's runway we've been passed. What's ahead of us is, what are we going to do about it? Gary?
The question I had for the city manager is, last year, uh, we had a grant or earlier this year, uh, the, to clean out, uh, it was, I guess, brush and vegetation from Gil's Branch. How effective was that as far as where it is today from when they finished? Has it grown back? Is it, is it going to be a continual maintenance issue that we, we need to address weekly, monthly, annually? You know, what kind of rate does that, does it grow?
Well, with the amount of debris that was carried back into the Gil's Branch as a result of the rain, pretty much all the work that we did last year is for naught. So we're going to have to go back in there and clean out the debris, brush and junk that we had previously cleaned out. Um, the, the comment was made about trees, uh, growing in Gil's Branch. We know where the trees are, but, uh, the government would not, the US government-
I, I, I'm having trouble hearing, city manager. I hope you'll give us the benefit of everybody listening to him.
FEMA would, that was a FEMA grant that we got to clean out the, the debris, brush and stuff. They would not let us cut any tree, six inches or- They would not let us cut any tree, six inches or wider, down in Gil's Branch, because that gets us back into a Corps permit, and we wanted to get in there and get as much debris and stuff cleaned out. So we have it scheduled to clean out Corps, uh, annually now, uh, but it's gonna be more extensive this time around because of the rain.
Is, does, is there a potential FEMA grant to, to do more clearing of that?
We, we did get additional funding to do the last lake from approximately Highway 71, all the way down to the Colorado River. We just got funded for that.
What about upstream of that?
Uh, that'll have to be, we're, we're gonna be incorporating that into our drainage, annual drainage work. Where there's, there's not any more funds available, other than the first ones that we got.
Bill?
Yes, sir. I'd like to see this moved ahead as soon as possible, because we've heard everybody here, uh, the biggest thing is Gil's Branch, that's causing the backup and flooding. And, uh, just want everybody to know, I'm gonna push hard on this, because I pay taxes on Gil's Branch too, and I can't do a thing with it, except pay taxes on a ditch. So if we can move this, if the, the council can move it as soon as possible on this, to make something happen to where we don't get into the flooding situation again, as soon as possible.
Well, Bill, would you wanna make a motion, uh, instruct the city manager to do something?
You bet. I wanna instruct the city manager to move as soon as possible, and getting all the permission needs from the Corps of Engineers, and whoever else is involved in Gil's Branch as far as a waterway, so we can, uh, make some progress and get it to stay cleaned, and get cleaned up for the public.
I'll second that.
Got a second from Kay. Uh, no, I wanna, I wanna, we've got that motion on the floor, and I should've called on Willie in advance, but I wanna say, Willie has, we've got a, he's, we're dovetailing two things here, so I think it's related to that motion, Willie. But I wanna give you a chance to raise the issue that we've combined with this, so we didn't have two, two issues going. So please, uh, speak.
Appreciate Mr. Peterson's, uh, initiative on, on creating a motion to start progression on work. Uh, I think, I think we need to, to recognize the Public Works Director, because he's, he's worked on, uh, uh, several issues concerning what streets and identified the cost and the drainage and, and everything, and I, and I hope that they would include, when you, when you have the city manager and he working together, or whoever from the council, that you would, you would want to work along with them, and, and keep continuing to move this project forward. But the Public Works Director today has material in, in his office that, that can move this project along.
And those, um, projects were listed in the estimate that I handed out to you last week.
So, Bill, did I hear you say, uh, was the implication of your motion that this is a very, very high priority for our staff and the city council?
Yes, sir. It's a very, very priority, high priority, because we don't, we don't, it's, it's quite a bit of rain, and it's real fast, and we don't know when it's gonna happen again. And the way this, the, the weather's looking, it could happen again at any time. So let's move this forward as quickly as, as we can.
Now, Willie, do you wanna address the thing about downstream, or is we have that covered?
No, but they, but they can do with Gil's Branch, I mean, I mean, we gotta, we just need to start with Gil's Branch.
Okay, all right. Uh, any other comments?
I would just say that, um, we're very close to getting the necessary easements for downstream of Gil's Branch, and once we get that, as I previously stated, we have received FEMA funding for that, and that will begin right away.
Okay. So is everybody clear on the motion? Mike, makes sense to you?
Yes, sir.
I think we're ready to vote.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember McEnally?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem, Del Rosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Uh, thank you all. I wanna say to everyone who's, uh, addressed us tonight, that, um, I know there's a lot of skepticism about what we may have done in the past, but I, I know this council very well, I know our staff. Um, I don't, I think that we're going to follow up from this motion, and our staff will follow up, uh, from this, uh, thing we just passed, that we're not going to sit on it as a few people suggested. And sure, you hold us accountable, keep talking to us, get information into the staff, we've got everything you said recorded, we can go over it. We wanna partner with you, I know I speak for this council. We wanna partner with you in fixing this, however we can. And it's gonna take a village to make it happen, and Willie wants to say something.
I, I just wanna say to the manager, as, as he and the Public Works Director go forward, it's, it's not just only, don't, don't overlook an area, uh, from Hawthorne to Linden Street, from Hill Street in that area, from 95 back toward Pecan, because that, that area is flooded as well, and, and it's got that detention pond, but, you know, we're gonna need to address the water coming off 95, but this is, this is solely just not a Gil's Branch issue in here, here in flooding in town.
And so, I agree with that, Mr. Del Rosa, and we did, when the stuff that we gave you last week, it does include a cost estimate for addressing that area.
We're gonna take a 10-minute recess.
Thank you all for coming tonight and for your comments.
That was okay. That was gru- grueling. Yeah.
I'm gonna go ahead and reconvene this month. Uh, we're trying to get a couple of council members, but I'm gonna go ahead and reconvene this session. Uh, we're, uh, recess is completed, and we are at item, uh, for the city manager. Uh, Mike, does anybody have any, any questions or, uh, request or anything of Mike, uh, as under his city manager's, uh, item eight?
I just want to make very much comment on the motion. Um, I, my interpretation is that what you've directed is that we get on this drainage issue right away. Um, that Gil's branch seems to be the highest priority, but that's not at the expense of the other areas that flooded in the town as well, right?
Okay, I think that was, that was my understanding.
Could I make one more comment along with that? And you're exactly right on that. But what I would ask, Mike, with the remaining time that you have here, you and the mayor, exercise, uh, y'all's authority of meeting with our, and calling our US congressmen to speed this process along with the US Corps of Engineers at the federal level-
Sure.
-because of the flooding and the issues that occurred here in our community.
Okay. Yeah, that's a great suggestion. Uh, we can talk to everybody we can think of. Um, we're at, um, nothing else from Mike, so we're at citizens' comments. Uh, this is, uh, for items that are not on our agenda. You have three minutes. Uh, we unfortunately are not permitted to reply, so you can say what you want to, and as happened with the flood questions two, two weeks ago, uh, we can later on respond in some way.
Ken, I have a comment.
Uh, yes?
Um, I just, and specifically for this area on North Main Street, I do, I do believe that this grant that we've gotten for the shelter up there on North Main, uh, in that north part of town up there is going to do a lot to bring attention and relief to what y'all are dealing with. And I wanted to say that to-
Yeah.
-in response to, um, to your comments earlier.
It, I think anybody's been following us knows we've been giving a whole lot of attention, uh, after, no doubt, years of neglect, uh, to that area of town. Uh, David Siler.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Dave Siler, thirteen ten Ranch Road six twenty in Austin. I am the manager of the development at Pecan Park. Just wanted to, uh, let all the audience know and council know that we're available for meeting with, uh, the neighborhood and surrounding residents to discuss drainage issues, and we'll be, uh, making ourselves available as early as this next week to do so, and invite council members and, uh, all those who would like to participate and see if we can address some of the concerns.
Uh, I've allowed you to comment on something that's on our agenda because, uh, we're gonna pull it. We have already agreed to pull it off the agenda, so it's not on the agenda. So I appreciate your, your making that comment, and it's very important to us, and I appreciate your reaching out because we've got a lot of questions we have to ask, and thank you for initiating it.
Thank you.
Oh, I can't say that. Oh, I could say the first part, sorry. Thank you. Uh, Joe Grady Tuck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Uh, my name is Joe Grady Tuck. I live at fifteen oh three Wilson Street. I'm a practicing attorney. I'm a fifth generation resident of this county. I, uh, was asked to come here and address my own thoughts as well as those of David Bragg, who's the immediate past president of the, of the Bastrop County Bar Association. I was gonna be joined here by a number of other attorneys, uh, who, who due to the obvious, uh, more pressing, uh, comments of the flood victims, uh, were, had to leave. That would be Derek Van Gilder, who was gonna say something, also Scott Howard. Uh, Brian McDaniel was here. Uh, he had to leave. Uh, and Victor Gonzalez. So all of us were gonna come as a group and announce or, or address the council and congratulate the council for, uh, taking steps to curb what we all consider to be excessive expenditures on legal fees. Uh, we also, to assure the council, that we think that their, their action was only proper and prudent, but also completely within the purview of the council, who, according to Mr. Talbot's own, uh, statement, uh, is the employer of the city attorney. I've got no criticism of Ms. Brown. I'm sure she's done a good job, but the cost of this, uh, of the, of the legal fees for a city of eight thousand people is approximating a half million dollars for her fees and another half million dollars for out of another Dallas council. And for a city of eight thousand people to be spending a million dollars a year for legal fees, uh, we think is, is, uh, is imprudent as both as taxpayers and observers of the legal system. Nobody knows better than us. We do this for a living, and all of us have observed, uh, we know how much it costs to, uh, to do legal work for a city of eight thousand people collectively and individually. I have over forty-six years' experience. David Bragg has a similar amount. Both of us have been public, in public practice. I was the elected district attorney of a six-county judicial district for many years. He was the head of the consumer protection division of the Attorney General's office. We know what it costs to, to conduct a public practice, and I think that we, that it's the city's very prudent action to, to put curbs on those without commenting on it or any criticism of anybody. I just think that it's an appropriate, uh, gesture on behalf of the city, and I wanna congratulate the city council for doing that. And one other thing, sitting here listening to ours, I think that the people that in this audience that are flood victims would rather see, would rather see, uh, that money spent on cleaning up Gil's branch than spending a million dollars a year on out of city lawyers. That's what I think. So, thank you for your time.
Uh, thank you. Did, is Mr. McDaniel gone?
Yes.
Uh, Victor Gonzalez? Derek Van Gilder? Carlos Liriano?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Uh, Mike, uh, tonight I wanted to take an opportunity to, uh, thank the council, the previous council, this council, Mike, Trey, and the school system. Uh, the city and the school system came together and opened the gym for open play. Tonight, as I was driving to City Hall, I stopped by the gym in the rain, and they had thirty-five kids playing ball in the gym. Um, that's awesome, and I just wanted to thank you all for making recreation a priority and to continue, encourage you to continue to make recreation for the kids of this community a priority. Uh, Trey's working hard to bring different groups together, uh, to make this happen, and, uh, we are a better community for it, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Carlos. Um, that's the end of that. We move to consent agenda. There are, um, five items that we will, and now, JC, I don't have to read any of these. Do I, any of, they're not bolded?
Move forward.
Thank you. Uh, if any, does anybody wanna pull any item off for a separate discussion? Uh, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem moves that we, uh, approve this on a single vote. Is there a second?
Second.
And please call a roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Del Rosso?
Yes.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Did we just approve everything?
Yes.
So that's including the tattoo parlors?
No, no, only on the A, the A items.
Okay, then I'm yes. Okay, sorry.
Councilmember McInally?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Del Rosso?
We, uh, uh, thank you. Uh, we have dispensed with item B one, B two, B three, a public hearing, uh, on proposed assessment to be levied against property located in the Excess Ranch Public Improvement District as presented in the Excess Ranch PID preliminary service and assessment plan approved by the city council at the May twenty-four, twenty sixteen regular city council meeting. Mr. Talbot?
Uh, yes, Mayor. Uh, this is item B three. Um, this is a public hearing on the public improvement district that you, the council created back last year, and, um, it's to take input on the preliminary, uh, service and assessment plan, which is included in the ordinance on item B four, um, which starts on page, I had it here, and I apologize. Page fifty-six, and, um, the various sections, um, that you are, will receive open comment or public comment on is as laid out in page fifty-seven, which is your table of contents. It talks about the plan description, defines your terms, uh, the property be, to be included in the PID, uh, the description of the authorized improvements, um, the assessment plan and the service plans, um, terms of the assessments and the assessment role. And then you have your appendixes, um, which are your improvement areas, your neighborhood improvements, uh, your legal description, and, and your parcel map. Um, I think most importantly, uh, the council, um, should look at your defined terms, uh, the assessment and service plan, because that's what, what you're gonna be assessing fees against, um, and that's all laid out for you in this document, very detailed. Um, our bond counsel is not here tonight, but, um, he has given his, uh, voice of, oh, yes, you are.
Please, Jan, over to Paul Walker's person.
Right, I'm sorry. He is here. Gotta stand in, I apologize. Um, but they have looked at this document. Um, they are comfortable with it. Uh, this will only be the first reading tonight, and, um, we'll get into that in a moment. Um, I will say that, uh, rather than close the public hearing, that we continue to receive public comment until the second reading, which will be July twenty-six, I believe. Uh, that way, if anybody wants to provide any additional written comment after this evening, uh, they have the opportunity to do so before the council takes final action.
So, JC, we could just do another public hearing before the second, the second reading, right?
We could. I apologize. We could, but our recommendation is that we, we keep this public hearing open so that we have it-
So I just don't close it out?
Yes, sir.
And then it carries over, it's like old business or something?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I understand. Okay, we will not close this, we will not close this out, and, I'm sorry, Mike?
Yes.
I interrupted you, Mike, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Um, so I just wanted to give you an outline of, of what we're doing here tonight. Uh, Mr. John Landerworth is here, and he's put together a more condensed version to walk you through this, and I think he can answer some of the questions the council may have.
Is now the time for that?
Yes, sir.
John, your honor.
Mayor, Council, Mike, thank you for having me. Uh, again, this is a continuation of the conversations we've had, uh, with the city staff, the council, for the last year. Um, you've got the service and assessment plan, uh, in your packets. That was what was presented at the, at the previous meeting, I believe, on the twenty-fourth of May. Uh, and this is just the next part of that. It's opening the public hearing and going through that. I, I just have a few slides, uh, tonight, as, as Mike described. This is, uh, the public hearing on the service and assessment plan. We call it the SAP, uh, and then the first reading of the PIT assessment ordinance. Uh, again, tonight is not the end, the decision point. We have another two meetings. We'll, we'll come back very briefly on the twelfth, as well as on the twenty-sixth is really the, the final deciding date. Uh, generally, the parameters are, are right in line with what we've discussed, uh, over the last twelve-plus months. Uh, as Mike described, I kinda broke the SAP out into, into the main, uh, portions of, of that document for you. It's, it's really describing the property. It's all excess ranch. Um, there aren't any residences as we exist today. Uh, the authorized improvements, which improvements are allowed, um, and how the assessments are gonna work and how it's all gonna be managed. This is, this is one of multiple documents that you get, that you're gonna see over, over the next month. Um, it's right in line with, with what you've had in your packets and what we've gone over for a while. So, uh, generally, uh, the excess PID boundary is what was described previously. I'm just gonna kinda go through this a little bit for you. It was the same thing we had the other day, is you've got a neighborhood improvement area as well as, so that, the best way to describe that is that's the first neighborhood. That's the first grouping of homes that's going to go in, and then you have a, a major improvement area. That's all kind of the remaining land. Uh, the major improvements, the, these are the authorized improvements. The major improvements can include these. Generally, this is what we're including in, into the, the major improvement. So this is your main infrastructure pieces. This is the bridge. This is the water, or wastewater mains, lift stations, uh, mass grading, you know, drainage issues that we talked about today. We're, we're, we're doing a, a lot of work there. And then on the neighborhood improvements, this would be your in-street work. So this would be your utilities in your streets. Uh, it would be your wastewater systems, your drainage, erosion controls. You can see that a little bit better there, so you can see the first neighborhood pieces. You can see the big drainage pieces that we have to put in, the bridge and the road from, from the highway. And please feel free to stop me as we kinda go along here if you have any questions. Uh, this is how our major improvements break out in those two areas. Uh, these are cost estimates, uh, for the, the total, um, grouping of, of what those costs are. Uh, and so, uh, you will go into the service plan here. So this is the major improvement bond. There's actually gonna be two bonds, uh, in this, one for the major improvement and one for the neighborhood improvement. Uh, and so the neighbor, the major improvement bond will be about a five million dollar bond issuance, and then the developer, who's us, will make up the difference in those cost numbers. Okay? So we're funding all the differences there, 'cause the, the bonds actually don't allow for, for total reimbursement of all those expenses. Uh, and then you've got a, a neighborhood improvement that's gonna be right in the range of about eleven and a half million dollars. So total about sixteen and a half on this first, on this first bond issuance. Uh, this is an example. It's, and most of these numbers are very close. Uh, we'll get to a final understanding of what our cost of issuance are, but, but most of these numbers are very close. Uh, you've always asked for kind of a, a typical. What is the assessment gonna mean for the, for the typical homeowner? And, and how we do that is a fifty-foot lot is, is generally about a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house, and what that means in an equivalent. Uh, this would be your annual installment of that, of that PID tax. Okay? So this is on a five-million-dollar bond, so it's a two-hundred-and-forty-two-dollar-per-year assessment that's owed on that, on that, uh, property, as well as this eighteen-hundred-and-ten. So that comes up to be about two thousand dollars, um, of that assessment. Really what that is, 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 it's the two together, so it's about two thousand dollars. Um, and that's the equivalent. What we, we capped ourselves generally at that, at that eighty-three cent range to get us just right around three dollars a total tax rate. So that's what we've talked about previously.
Of course. So these are basically just two different, two different numbers that are, that are set rates, but not like a, a, a tax rate that you would see on your tax statement?
That, that is correct. We will actually try to apply them to their tax statement, and it'll look like a tax rate, but these are set assessments. So once, and these numbers are, are very close to what the final numbers will be. Uh, those are set at the, at the end when you guys approve the bond issuance, but, uh, so that rate will be set, that amortization schedule that you'd see, you will know as a property owner out there what this PIT assessment's gonna be for the next thirty years.
'Cause I, I was just trying to understand a little bit, and I, I think I got it now, 'cause, uh, I'm, I was going back to a comment you made in the last meeting that, and I was trying to figure out if you had a number rate and not, and not a tax rate like, like your county and your school and your ESD and all that. You said you were gonna, that was gonna fall below a cap of three dollars, and I was just trying to figure out how would those people know that they had a number rate or what that tax rate would be for their, for that property?
So they will, and, and the difference in, with the PID, because it's an assessment and it's not a tax rate, is it'll be set day one. Okay? And so those, those homeowners, those property owners, will know what that tax rate of that PID will be for the life of that bond. Okay? So it's not gonna fluctuate with home value, and it's actually, so it's advantageous for that, for that home buyer, actually, is, is that they know what it is that's set. It doesn't increase as the property values increase. And so the, the service and assessment plan is doing both, showing what can be serviced, i.e. the improvements, and then how it's assessed, laying it out. Uh, and so here's, just, uh, and then this is just the special conditions of what excess, uh, really is and why a PIT is necessary. Uh, just, its scale, its location, because we have so much infrastructure, uh, its fiscal impact, not only to the city, but the county and the region, uh, and then the, really, the, the ability of certain regional infrastructure pieces, i.e. the bridge. It's a, it's a pretty big improvement to the county and its transportation plans. Um, and then we, as we talked at the last couple of meetings, just, uh, what we're looking at doing is, is a private placement and, and holding that rate at an equivalent tax rate of, of three dollars per one hundred.
John?
Yes, sir.
Willie?
Just one question of either you or our attorney or the city manager.
Just one question of either you or our attorney or the city manager, and just, and I, I understand that, what you said about the overall tax rate of three dollars. Mike, after all this is approved and, and it's done deal, it's, it's not any, I don't want to say it, not a concern to, to the city after that, if that, if they exceed that three dollars? It's not a, not a concern to see, but that's not anything that matters to us, is it?
No, sir. Because they have to ensure that the fee that they set will cover their bond requirements.
And then for tonight, it will be the, this is the proposed excess ranch PID assessment ordinance, just as the language that's, that's been put in your packet as well.
Deborah?
My question is, does, is, is this going to impact our ability, if we're here, if we approve the supporting of, of the issuance of this bond, is it going to impact how much we're able to borrow a city, as a city, since we're carrying it?
No. No, this, even though it, the city is, even though the city is the vehicle by which we issue these bonds, we will have to disclose the fact that we have been the vehicle, but they will not be counted against us because excess ranch has to put up collateral for the bonds to support the bond owners, not the city.
Anything else? Is that it?
Yeah.
This is a public hearing, I haven't had anything, and nobody wants to speak. Council members, you're part of the public, and you're, either, if not, we'll go on to the action item.
Do you have any questions for our bond counsel, because I do apologize for not recognizing him?
Yeah. We are not going to close out this public hearing.
Mayor, I would just recommend that we continue it through taking public comment until July twenty-sixth.
And, oh, okay, we'll come back on the twenty-sixth, and then Ann will figure out how to post that.
Yeah, we'll take care of it.
All right, item B four is first reading of an ordinance, City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, accepting and approving a service and assessment plan and assessment role for the excess ranch public improvement district, making a finding of special benefit to the property and the district, levying special assessments against property within the district and establishing a lien on such property, providing for payment of the special assessment in accordance with Chapter three-seventy-two, Texas Local Government Code, as amended, providing for the method of assessment and the payment of the special assessment, providing for penalties and interest on delinquent special assessments, and providing an effective date. Mike?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is, as John has said, is the first reading of the ordinance, it's item B four, starting on page forty-five, with the actual ordinance on forty-six. We will not be doing the second reading until later in July. And from the city's perspective, and the city's bond counsel and financial advisor, we have worked very closely with John's group, and I think that all parties, from this perspective, are in agreement that everything is in order and should pass on the first reading.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion, second, discussion. Call the roll, please.
Was it Mayor Protem Delarosa that made the motion?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Delarosa?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember McAnally?
Yes.
Thank you. Good luck, we'll see you back in July.
Thank you, John. Thank you all very much.
Item B five is a public hearing to receive public input on a request for an amendment to the zoning ordinance, Chapter fourteen, Appendix A three definitions, Section A three definitions, to update definitions for two-seven-oh-point-two Tattoo Studio, to reference micropigmentation permanent makeup as an allowable incidental accessory use in definition number seventy-five, custom personal service shop definition. Ms. McCollum?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This item you saw at your last meeting of June fourteenth, but I went ahead and split it up into two different items. So item B five and B six will be related to changing the definitions above Tattoo Studio and Custom Personal Service Shop. So these changes in the definitions would allow dermographics or makeup tattooing as an accessory or incidental use to a hair salon or, or barber shop. So with that, as discussed briefly last time, tattooing is regulated by the state, therefore they need to get a tattoo license, and for that, currently tattooing isn't allowed in our city limits without a CUP, and the industrial districts only, so this would allow it in our commercial zoning districts with these changes in definitions. Again, Tattoo Studio definition does not reference dermographics or permanent makeup, and then also Custom Personal Service Shop as, as a hair salon or barber shop does not allow it as an accessory use, and this will change both those definitions in our current code to allow it as an accessory use. This does not allow full tattooing or tattooing only services at, at this point in time in these changes. With that, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a workshop back in March, and they actually held a public hearing and action item to recommend at their May twenty-sixth meeting, and they did unanimously recommend six to zero to recommend not only these changes to the definitions, but the other item that is now B seven and B eight.
All right, thank you. Questions, comments?
Okay, one thing that we talked about that I noticed was changed was the distance. So it looks like now that you're saying that tattoo studios can be within five hundred feet of, that, that is the next item, and, and yes.
Well, let's, let's save it for the next item, then, if it's not this one.
I have a question, and this is for legal counsel. On page one-twenty-three, when it says item summary, okay, so it says permanent makeup, i.e. micropigmentation, permanent cosmetics, cosmetic, tattooing, and dermographics. And then later on, it says, well, basically what I'm saying is, that example, does that mean that it's limited to that example, or does that mean that's inclusive of that example?
That's a good question. It probably should say EG instead of IE.
I think that was an example, the definitions would actually be changed as, as shown here, and so customer, custom personal service shops, so again, the underlines are highlighting the changes, the first sentence would remain unchanged, but it says other services such as dermographics or permanent makeup may be offered as an accessory slash incidental use to the primary use.
What I believe, what I believe Ms. McCollum is saying is that the question that you're asking is referenced in a memo that she prepared as an example to the, for the public hearing that she had, and so that's not part of our definition. She was trying to give examples to them concerning, I suppose, what permanent makeup was?
Yeah.
Kind of examples of what they were going to be. But what the council needs to look at in determining whether or not to pass this ordinance is what the ordinance has in its text as the changed definition, offer services such as dermographics or permanent makeup, so...
But I, I'm a little unclear as to...
About what dermographics are?
Yeah.
My understanding is that it's permanent makeup.
Yeah, but can, can I, can I have permanent makeup applied to my whatever?
Oh?
Well, I mean...
Is that a legal question?
I don't know. That's, that's a good say, there.
Should we, yeah, should we ask Melissa that question? Or maybe we get a dermatology expert in here, I don't know, I mean...
I do think we have someone signed up to speak that does do permanent makeup, and she came both to the P and Z and council meetings, but from my research, I will say there are some skin conditions that do cause kind of bleaching of the skin and different things that...
Yes.
It can help with some of those...
And breast reconstruction and all those things. So to me, saying that it's cosmetic, those things are also cosmetic, but I think that the spirit of this whole thing is that we don't want unsavory tattoo parlors in our city limit, so I would like this to be completely specific about what cosmetic means and what is allowed under this. I just need it to be really specific so that we know what we're voting on.
So you're requesting perhaps at the second reading to have a more detailed description of what dermographics involve?
Thank you, yes, exactly.
Is that doable on your perspective?
Yes.
Okay, all right, Willie?
Let me, on the, on the prior screen, I was looking to see where this was, where you separated these two, and I was more concerned with the next, B seven and B eight, but tell me again, like, C one, C two? Excuse me. Wouldn't there, didn't we have it somewhere on there where it said C one, C two? I guess the question I'm asking, in, in what I, what I call the old CBD around the, the old CBD area here in town that was changed, you know, you know what I'm talking about?
Yes.
This would be allowed in that area?
Yes. So it would be allowed, a barber shop currently in hair salon is allowed in the office classification neighborhood services, general or retail, C one and C two zoning classifications, and it also would be allowed within the, what was the central business district, which would be historic Main Street, downtown mixed-use, civic, cultural arts, and commercial mixed-use. And again, this is as an accessory use.
So, so a barber shop within the CBD, the old CBD, and I'm going to be specific here in a little bit, a tattoo...
Can you say what CBD is, please, Willie, so everybody knows?
Central Business District.
Central Business, and it's basically Pecan Street to Wall Street, back to the alley, and up Farm Street to where Terry Orr lived. So a tattoo, a tattoo place could go with the barber shop in, in that area, in that CBD?
For, for permanent makeup, yes, it could be a secondary use.
It's a tattoo shop, though.
For permanent makeup, if the primary use is, is a hair salon and they happen to do some permanent makeup, it could be as, an accessory use to the primary use of a hair salon.
So, so there's no limit from any schools or, and within this area, schools or churches or anything?
Not for, not as I'm proposing, and, and for permanent makeup only.
See, I don't, I don't understand tattoos and permanent makeup, that's why, I'm, I'm confused right now, because the, I'm just, I'm just confused, I, I don't know, because I don't, I don't believe they need to be in residential neighborhoods, and, and I'm just confused that, say, where the Johnsons moved, and where the bookstore was, if that guy wanted to put a barber shop in a tattoo place in there, you're saying it's allowed in the CBD?
I'm saying it could be a barber...
It could be in the CBD.
Yes, it could be a barber shop primarily, and if they had an accessory, like if they did tattoos ever so often of, of permanent eyeliner and, and makeup, they could do that, yes.
And I'm sure the church across the street would love that.
Yes.
That's, that's my point, that's where I'm getting at.
Okay, okay.
Yes, I very much support any tattooing for cosmetic purposes that are applicable, especially for medical reasons, and, and could be done on the face for, for eyeliner and eyebrows and all those sorts of things, and I don't see a harm, in other words, the spirit of the no tattoo parlors in the city limits, I think we all know what we don't want, but I think to provide, to provide people of, of better, of better services for cosmetic purposes, we just have to be real clear what those are. So I very much appreciate you working to find out exactly what those beauty salons and, and barber shops would offer, because it could be a very good thing for the city, but we sure don't want to break the spirit of this ordinance.
Might there be some state...
There's somebody who wants to speak too, did you fill out a form?
Might there be some state statutes on tattoo parlors and licenses that differentiate the difference between a tattoo and a, a permanent makeup? Because if there are, could we use those?
No, I, I think that's where some of the issue comes in, is unless you're a, a medical establishment, so there are medical establishments that do, do, for example, Ms. McAnally, which you brought up, some breast reconstruction and some different things, but if that's done under the medical umbrella, tattooing can be done under that medical umbrella too, but this, to, if you don't have a medical license, you need to get a tattoo license if you're, if you're applying that, and with that is where some people were looking at allowing permanent makeup as, as an ancillary or accessory use to, you know, their hair salon.
Melissa, did you say you had somebody available that you wanted to call on to talk about details?
Yes, I believe she signed up.
Would you like to do that?
Yeah, sign up.
No, would you like to call on her?
Um, sure.
And, and introduce her and tell us why you're calling on her and so forth?
Well, this was, this lady, I believe owns a, or she works at a hair salon, or owns a hair salon over in the Tahitian area up, up front there, and she actually came to us to, to have us, went through the appropriate channels and regulations to have us sign off on, she needs to get a tattoo license, they are licensed through the state for approval on that, and with that is kind of where these, these red flags...
So if you'd like to call her and speak to us, you're free to do that.
Please. Hi, my name's Dawn McDonough, and I do have a shop in Tahitian Village. This is the application for the tattoo license, and the state does not differentiate. It lists us with tattooing, permanent cosmetics, scarification, and body piercing, and it's nine-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars versus a cosmetology license is sixty dollars. So they don't differentiate, so in order to do this legally, I do have to follow through with this, but the Bastrop only allowed tattooing in a very small area off of Jackson Street. So that's where I came to the girls, and I said, okay, you guys' law is very, very old, they have it under sexual services, and this is a new medical dilemma. My eyebrows are done, I did them myself, there's a lot of women that have medical conditions, and they've lost their eyebrows, and, you know, it's an accent when you do an eyeliner or lip liner, things like that, but to wake up and have eyebrows on your face, that's what I'm talking about, and it's not permanent. A tattoo goes very deep into the skin, and that is permanent. Even though they call it permanent makeup, it does fade in a year or two, and now there's a newer technique called microdermabrasion, where it's actually just etching the skin, and that lasts six months to eighteen months, depending if you stay out of the sun. So I'm sorry that they call it permanent makeup, but it's really not, you know, depending on how you take care of it, and it is completely different than a tattoo, it's a different gun, you're not using that tattoo gun, you know, the inks are similar, and your health practices are similar, but it's not putting a spider web on somebody's neck, it's, it's benefiting them so a woman can wake up in the morning and feel better about herself.
Anybody have any questions? Melissa, is that what you wanted us to hear? Okay, thank you very much. We're, what are we doing? We're, we're in a public, are we in a pub, we're in a public hearing? I don't have any other, do you want to say anymore? Yeah, we, we, I wanted to give you more time as an expert witness instead of doing this, so if you want to say anymore, you're up to, for three minutes if you want to say anymore. Are you good? You're good to go? Okay, and we'll ask you, you're, you're on, you're helping our staff, so if anybody has any questions later, you can come up. Is there any reason why we shouldn't close the public hearing? All right, this, item B five, public hearing is now closed, we move to item B six, which is first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending definition number seventy-five and number two-seven-oh-point-two in Appendix A three in Chapter fourteen of the City of Bastrop zoning ordinance for the term custom personal service shops to include, there's a parentheses, miss, I mean, a, a quotation mark missing somewhere, to include permanent makeup services as accessory use to barber beauty shop uses, providing a service of severability clause, and providing an effective date. Ms. McCollum?
Thank you, Mayor, Council, this would be...
This would be the action item, so if you so choose to approve and ask me to clarify the definition of what permanent makeup is, I could do that before the second reading.
Could I make a motion that we come back to this next time with a definition that's completely clear to all of us before we vote on it, please?
A motion to postpone till when? July 12?
Yes.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilmember McAnally?
Yes.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Delarosa?
Yes.
Thank you. Mike, on B seven and B eight?
Yes, sir.
Do you think that that motion they just passed would call on us to pull these, or are they separate enough that we should go ahead and deal with these?
The only thing I would suggest is that you hold the public hearing.
Okay.
But if things aren't clear, then we can clear it up by the next time, because every time we do a public.
Go through the same process?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Public hearing, B seven, receive public input on a request for an amendment to the zoning ordinance, Chapter 14, Section 3611, zoning use charts, Section 43.9B supplemental regulations, Section 43 supplemental regulations, Section 43.9B, uses clarified as sexually oriented business or as tattoo studio or body piercing studios, to modify phrasing referencing tattoo studio or body piercing studios and Section 36, use regulation charts, Section 3611, to add tattoo studio and body piercing studio to the use chart, and, that's what it says, there's an "and" on the end, I don't know where it goes from there. So, anyway, Ms. McCollum?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. So, as discussed, this was originally discussed briefly at the June meeting, and we separated these two items. And this would look at adding, there are current definitions for both tattoo and body piercing studio, but this would look at adding the uses as standalone uses in the use chart. And then it would also look at, as you briefly mentioned, Councilman Delarosa, modifying the distance requirement for these uses only in regards to the church public school or licensed daycare center. So, again, these would look at adding them to, currently, as I mentioned, tattoo studio and body piercing studio are not included in the use chart. They are part of the current sexually oriented business definition, which is only allowed with a conditional use permit in the industrial park zoning classification. And this would allow it as a standalone use potentially in the C two industrial park, light industrial, and planned development zoning, if it was approved as part of the planned development zoning. So, as discussed briefly last time, it would not be allowed with any of the current planned development zoning classifications that we have in this current city limits. And standalone tattoo and body piercing studios would not be allowed within the Form Based Code, or as you're calling it, Councilman Delarosa, within the central business district. But it would still have some distance requirements. It must be 500 feet away from another tattoo or body piercing studio, and it must also be 500 feet from a residentially zoned or used property. So, it would keep some of the distance requirements, but it would eliminate the 1,000 feet from a school, church, public park, or playground.
Thank you. Willie?
So, the only difference here than probably on the last one, that you said it can be used in the planned development area, the zoning, zoning that's planned, area that's zone planned development?
If approved, if approved as part of the planned development when it came before P and Z Council. So, all of our existing planned development areas did not list that as an allowable use, so it would not be allowed in any of our current planned development areas.
So, if Pecan Park wanted to put a tattoo parlor out there?
They would not be allowed to use it.
Because?
Because when their original planned element, they delineated the uses, and that was not a use that was, that they delineated within the zoning classification.
So, excuse me, Mayor, the Pine Creek area on Wilson Street and Carter Street area north of the railroad tracks that we approved a planned development for, how's it working in that part of the?
That also would not be allowed for the current, again, the actually, the only two uses that there are, actually, the only single use that they're allowed within that district is a single family. So, they're not even allowed any of the other planned use, planned development potential uses that are in the current use chart anyway. So, they're only limited to a single family residential.
You good?
Yeah, the distance requirement bothers me a little bit. The distance, the going from 1,000 to 500.
Going from 1,000 to 500 feet, I had a little question about it, but.
Deborah?
Yeah, I mean, the whole reason I asked that these be divided is so that you could make the makeup 500 feet and leave the tattoo 1,000, but then, I mean, it's like you made them both 500. So, I disagree with the distance. That's the whole reason I asked that they be divided. I mean, otherwise, it doesn't even, it's the same thing, you're doing the same thing, but then you have the trouble of dividing them. So, I'm asking that the tattoo studio, body piercing, still be kept at 1,000 feet, and that the makeup changed.
Yeah, and when we get to B eight, you can, it's okay, you can make that case. I mean, you're telling us what you believe, that's fine, but we'll.
That's what we're talking about right here.
Yeah, we can have it in, well, we can have it in a motion, so it means, it's fine what you said, but we'll, I'm just saying, the way we'll act on that is the other way.
Gary? Maybe I missed it. Is there a distance requirement built into the permanent makeup ordinance?
No, there's not.
Okay. What are you referring to, Deborah?
Well, that it's changing from 1,000 to 500.
But that's for tattoo parlors, not for makeup?
No, I understand, but, I mean, I asked that the makeup, that it be separated, so that it wouldn't have that restriction. And then, I think the initial, the initial proposal that is, was that it all be changed to 500 feet, and I didn't want any of it changed, I just wanted you to be able to remove the makeup, and you could do that the way you wanted to. I mean, she's, you know, in the beauty shop.
Which is what's been done, I think, isn't it? Isn't that what you've done?
Yes, I will say, the ordinance language has essentially remained unchanged from when you saw it last time, except for the fact that I did segregate the definition changes into one ordinance standalone, as well as the use chart amendments and some of the modifications that are proposed in this ordinance standalone.
Connor McAnally?
Hello, I just think, I'd like to ask that in future, when we're discussing these kinds of things about planning, could we have a map that shows what these districts are, please, for the public? So, I mean, you all, you know, Willie, obviously, you know these intimately because you've been on council so long, but the rest of the public don't necessarily know where a C one or a C two or whatever it is are. And it would be very helpful to members of the public to know where in town we're talking about putting stuff. Thank you.
I had to refer to the old, back in that, I had to. To refer to the old terms, but the Form Based Code terminology still get me, so that's why I was referring to the old terms of the CBD, the central business district, that's why I was making that comment.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, as a matter of course, if planning could put up a map to show us what they're talking about, that would be hugely helpful.
Mike, I would say that's a reasonable suggestion.
It's a point well taken, and we will incorporate that in future. So, thank you, Mr. McAnally.
Anything else? Do I continue this hearing as well? All right, Mike, what's your advice? Do I close this one out, or do we leave it open?
Counsel, you could close it out.
Well, let's leave it, let's do the same thing we did on the other one.
Well, we closed it.
The other one's for excess rent.
Oh, I'm sorry, wrong thing. Okay, this, no, no, this, we're closing the public hearing, I got mixed up. B seven is done. B eight is now first reading on an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending Sections 3611 related to zoning to add uses for tattoo, tattoo studios and body piercing studio to allow tattoo and body piercing studios to be located in District Zone C two IP, L I and P D, and Section 43.9B related to amend locations for piercing and tattoo studios, providing a severability clause and providing an effective date. Ms. McCollum?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Again, this would be the actual code amendments that would add these two uses to the use chart, and then also referencing still the distance requirements that must be maintained if, if they find a suitable place within those districts in regards to 500 feet away from zoned and used residential property, and as well as not having multiples conglomerated closest, close together, they would have to be a distance requirement from each establishment.
Do you want to talk about distance? Yes, now's the time. Sorry. Sure, yeah, yeah, you can make a motion.
Okay, I make a motion that it remains at 1,000 feet for the location of tattoo parlors in proximity to single family residence.
You want to move, do you want to move this, this motion with that amendment? We need to get the whole thing on board, so.
I think what you're trying to do is you want to approve the ordinance with the amendment that the distance be changed from 500 to 1,000 feet for residential areas.
Well, that it stays, isn't it, 1,000 feet now?
So, I will say, for the residential areas, it's 500 feet, and that's what it was. What I did eliminate was the 1,000 feet away from the school, church, public park, or playground, so.
So, you want to make it 1,000 for everything? I mean, so, so what I think, would you like it to be 1,000 for everything? That's perfected, I mean, if that's.
I make that motion for 1,000 feet for everything, approve of this ordinance with the amendment of making it 1,000 feet for all areas.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Deborah seconds, Gary?
Now that we have a second, I'd just like to address that I'd like to see the ordinance stay the way it was.
Okay, you would prefer, you're saying you'd prefer.
I'd prefer it to be more restrictive, that it would really limit where these types of businesses could be.
Don't do anything.
Don't do anything. We would change just the definition to allow the permanent makeup, if I can use that term, and leave the body piercing and tattooing as a sexually oriented business following the same guidelines.
Well, that's what I thought we were doing.
Well, you want to withdraw your motion?
I'll withdraw my motion.
Willie's withdrawing his motion, you're withdrawing the second. So, Gary, we'll let you make that motion, we'll see where it goes.
I move that we leave the existing ordinance on tattooing and body piercing the way it is right now.
So, we're essentially, your motion is essentially to?
I don't even need to make a motion, it's just to let it die.
Yeah, if there's.
Permit denial of this.
Yeah, I would, I would say we deny this.
Deny the request.
The request.
Okay, here's the thing. I think, I think, hold on a second. This has got so confusing. Can we just respectfully come back to this next time and ask, maybe you can work with our legal department to make this very, very clear to all of us, exactly what we're, what the definitions are and what we're, what we're voting on, because we don't want to get this wrong.
So, sorry.
So, would, would that be?
We've conducted.
I move that we take this off.
You can make, all right, but, Kay, what you can do, let me see how to do this. We've got a motion that we deny this request, or we do not, it's a motion to not approve B eight, period. A motion, a motion and a second. Kay?
And I'll call for the vote.
Yeah, well, I'm trying to deal with, because Kay's on the floor right now. So, Kay is, it would be appropriate for Kay to, to move.
Thank you, Mayor.
I think a substitute, I think a, let me think.
Can I just say what I want to say?
We've got to get a motion, though, we've got to get it right. So, you say what you want to, we'll figure the motion out, okay? So, you've got the floor until we figure it out.
Okay, I want to make a motion that we remove this whole item tonight, that planning works with legal and the city manager to make this clarified, because it's so convoluted right now, that I'm afraid we're going to punish the people we want to help and help the people that we don't want near us. And so, can we just take it away and come back to this another time, please?
Here's my suggestion for you, Kay. We've got a motion to exit out, we could always come back to it another day, but your argument would be, please do not vote for Gary's motion, so that you can, if it's turned down, then you can make your motion. So, I think, I think that would, that would be the parliamentary way to do this. I can figure out a way you make a substitute motion or something like that.
Can I, can I just ask legal counsel, please? Could you?
I'm asking you to call the vote, Mayor.
I'm trying to give Councilmember McAnally a chance to make a motion, and if she wants to make it, we've got to figure out how to do it. So, J.C., we want to do a substitute motion?
We could do that, or you can act on the motion on the floor, and then if Ms. McAnally wants to ask us to rework this section along with the other one that we're bringing back, the council can direct us to look at it, but the, I don't see how we can, how we can substitute a perfection to a denial.
So, the, so I think the suggestion, Kay, is once we vote on this, the floor will still be open on this subject for you to make a motion that we refer it. So, is there?
So, vote on Willie's motion, yeah.
Yeah, so we're going to, now, the motion from, was it Willie or Gary? Gary's motion is that we turn down, we reject this request. Is everybody clear on that? And then I will call on you if it passes. All right, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Delarosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember McAnally?
Yes.
Okay, now, Kay, I'm going to call on you to make a motion if you want to.
I move that we take this completely off the table, that it gets looked at and reworked so that it's clear to the public and to the council exactly what it is we're voting on.
Yeah, well, it is, I think that we've already voted, but you can say, I think it's not on the table, so we can't take it off. So, I think you can say, what if you were to move that we ask the staff to study this and come back with more information in case we want to revisit it?
Staff, would you please study this and come back with more information so that we can revisit it? Is this good? Great, thank you.
I'm taking that, I'm taking that as a motion, is there a second?
I would just say that I think that's very appropriate, Ann, but it may be the 26th meeting before we bring it back to you.
Well, it does for lack of a second, but staff can obviously, you know, take a request from a city council member to look at it.
Okay.
The council itself has not asked for that. Okay, we have no old business. Under new business, consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding purchase of a kiosk located in the city-owned parking lot at the northwest corner of Spring Street and Main Street, are generally located at 702 Main Street. I brought this up because the Chamber of Commerce asked me to see if we could get off the dime on this, and they own this building and are being taxed for it. It's on our property, they somehow own the building, so, Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do have the bill of sale prepared, and as you stated, and I included a picture, this is the first national, I mean, first national bank parking lot that we purchased on Spring Street, corner of Spring and Main, back in, I think, 2008. The building has been there in existence for a number of years. The chamber has not used it, I don't, at least since, I mean, since I've been here, the 10 years I've been here, they've not used it. And as you stated, they're being taxed for it. I don't have any immediate purpose for it, but clearly the chamber shouldn't be taxed for something they're not using. So, this is just authorizing me to sign the bill of sale for a dollar so it can get moved off tax.
I so move.
Second.
Got it, Gary, and then, Kay, please call the roll.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember McAnally?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Delarosa?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Thank you all. D two, consideration, discussion, and possible action on a proposed change in the type of parking on Main Street from the intersection of Pine Street traveling south for approximately 225 feet. Mr. Jobe?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Request was made to determine the fees of. Request was made to determine the feasibility of changing the parking from head-in to parallel intersection of Pine to Main. We went over there and took a quick look, looks like you'll lose one parking space. Essentially, it's one right in front of an island, which I think is causing a lot of the trouble. It's not striped like the ones on the other end of Main Street with, at the white line, so you may have a larger vehicle parked there from time to time. By changing that, you'll basically lose one space, but it will be that small space right in front of the island.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, I'm sorry, I can't do that. Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember McAnally?
Yes.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Delarosa?
Yes.
Thank you, Trey, that'll even up that whole section, and people driving down Main Street won't, won't be jogging around. Thank you. Consider, D3, consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding approval of a resolution requesting that the Texas Department Parks and Wildlife not repurpose the Bastrop Park Golf Course in order that it might remain a golf course. Councilmember Jones, and there's a resolution on page 146 that I think she may want to move.
Hey, I move that the council puts forth this resolution in support of private citizens that want to keep open the opportunity to reopen the nine-hole golf course at the state park. This will give the Parks and Wildlife Department something to keep on file so that that property won't be repurposed, and give the citizens, private citizens, an opportunity to repur, to possibly reopen that nine holes at the state park.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Kay?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that although I love that idea and would support the idea that we still keep a golf course if we can, the property doesn't belong to the city, but also, I've asked the city manager, and I'm sorry, Deborah, I didn't get a chance to go over this with you, because it just came in as I sat down at council, there are some, some real estate questions here that could be, could be helpful, that I think should need to have legal advice before we move further, so could I ask that we postpone the resolution, because I don't want to limit the opportunities for people who are playing golf? I think there are some additional considerations that may be helpful, so I'd like to revisit this on the 12th, is that our next council?
Our next council meeting is July 12th.
Okay, on July 12th, with the purpose of enhancing what you're trying to do.
Now, did we get a second on that motion?
I seconded, but I'd like to say I agree with, with Kay that if there are other enhancements that we can, we can add to the resolution that will add whatever purposes, I don't think waiting till the next meeting would be inappropriate.
Okay, but, okay, the sole purpose of this resolution is for the Parks and Wildlife Department to put this piece of paper in a file so that during this massive work that's going on at the park, where they're redoing roads and stuff, that that, that the, essentially that whole 18-hole area is, will not be taken and repurposed. That's it, that's just, they just need something that says, we will not take this and repurpose this, this is not anything more than that.
I, I just don't, if, if that could wait for two weeks, Deborah, I just don't want to limit the possibilities for the golf course.
Did you have a meeting with...
We've already met with Representative John Siria, we've already met with the county judge, and this is what, and the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department, we've met with Brent Leisure, we've met with Mr. Carter at the state, I mean, we've already met on every level, and this is what they need in their file just to keep that land from not being repurposed. That's it, that's all they need it for.
I think that's a reasonable request, and it doesn't restrict us from going back later and saying, hey, we would like you to also consider whatever Kay might have in mind.
Is that, is that right, JC? We can come back after this resolution?
Sure.
And add to it? Oh, great, okay.
Pass all the resolutions you want.
My second still stands.
Okay.
Yeah, pass all the resolutions we want. Any other discussion? All right, the motion is to pass Resolution Number R206, 201624 on page 146 of our packet. Is there any discussion further? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember McAnally?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Delarosa?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Mayor, if I could, could I ask you a question on the last agenda item? When I, when I was reading this, I was, this wasn't a request to determine whether it was feasible to go to parallel parking, it was, it was decided that we were going to go to parallel parking, correct?
Yeah, just, it would just...
I mean, because he said here the feasibility of studying going to parallel parking.
What we, well, what, what did we pass?
This wasn't the feasibility, this was actually changing it to parallel, right?
That's what I thought we were doing.
Okay, but you, on your, on your request, you said determine the feasibility of adding parallel parking. It just confused me a little bit. That's okay.
And, and Mike, what was your understanding of the motion?
My understanding was to go to parallel parking.
Okay, fix it, just to fix it.
Yeah, well, I was just...
I think we're good, I think, no, I think we're good.
No, it's a check.
Okay, thank you. Item D4, consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding moving the proposed general obligation bond election from November 2016 to May 2017. Mr. Delarosa?
I'll be brief. I'll be brief on this, I just, on our, on our bond election, I was just, it was just a thought of mine that when I was thinking about, and I wouldn't be bringing this up if Mike wasn't leaving September 1st, but in lieu of Mike leaving September 1st, I didn't know if after September 1st, in the next two months, or what our timeframe was, was in hiring a new manager, I just thought that, just to make sure that we, we're doing everything that we can to, to put a package together and present it to the voters, I just thought it'd be well worth it to maybe consider waiting till May to do it in our, in conjunction with the city council election.
Well, you know, we, our deadline is before Mike leaves.
Yes.
So, I mean, he'll be here, I mean, and we're, we're at the point of just deciding what we want to do, so...
Well, and I understand that, and the deadline is, and I don't understand what you're talking about, the deadline is before Mike leaves, we're calling an election.
We have to, JC, to get it worked out, we have to call the election in August, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
We have to, so we'll be done by September 1st.
But see, I don't have a problem with putting, whether it's going to have charter amendments or bond election in conjunction with one city council election.
So, no, I'm just...
But the point is, Ken, I just think it's, it's not fair to the new city manager coming in, not having a look, there might be a different set of eyes on these projects that we're approving, that the city, I don't think it's fair to the next city manager to come in, and he might see something different they were doing, that might be serving the citizens better than we, than we're seeing right now, and I just thought another set of eyes going in and just waiting till May is not, six months is not going to hurt the city.
Well, you've been the lead dog on the, on the bonds and stuff, so why don't you make a motion to that effect?
I just threw it out there and wanted to discuss it.
Well, I think that's reasonable, but I, I think that we should still put our priorities together, we should have our plan of what we're going to put out there done before Mike leaves, and then, you know, in fact, we could make the determination at that point that we're willing to go with it if it's real clear, or that we really want buy-in by the next city manager, in which case we, we postpone it, but I don't think we should, we postponed the process long enough, I think we need to forge on, get our bond priorities in order before Mike leaves, he's very knowledgeable on all the issues that are out there, and then we make a decision in August whether we want to put it in November, or whether we want to move it to March. But I, I do agree with Willie that if I was a new city manager and had this whole thing dumped on me, potentially, you know, it might be, I'd look at it differently and have some different priorities, I don't know, but I think we can visit that, as long as we get our act together, we can visit that in August and make that determination.
Excuse me, and the second part of that, I think that also gives us a few more months to decide what other maybe charter amendments we want to make to the charter.
Mike, any thoughts?
No, that's fine.
So...
Can I just ask the city manager, if you, if you could, off the top of your head, which is a big request, tell the pros and cons of putting off this decision?
All I can say is I was hired here in 2006, there was a bond election in 2002 and 2003, and one of the reasons I was hired was to get that bond package moved off debt center and get those projects underway.
So, it worked out for you, the other, the other, what we're, what we're worried about, it worked out for you in your experience?
From the standpoint, I knew what the citizens had voted and approved them, the council was very supportive of the projects, and we moved forward. We wouldn't be here tonight if we hadn't.
So, all right, so I think, I think what I hear is there's no need for a motion, but several of y'all are on the, on the track to revisit Willie's thoughts later on. Is that kind of what, okay, Willie, you good with that?
No, but I will make a motion. I'll make, I'll make a motion that we set the bond election and the charter election back till May of 2017.
Is there a second?
I second.
Discussion. I'll, I'll say, something Mike and I talked about today or yesterday was, this is, I don't know, this is, this is thinking about having an election where there's a lot of people engaged, as opposed to, as we all know, when we have our, our city elections, city only, you got a very small number of people, a lot, a lot of people, we, people have addressed that here. What do we do to get more people engaged and to vote? If we have it in November, there's going to be a lot of citizens voting, you'll get a much better view of what the citizens think, and we will have nobody to say, well, you know, 326 people did this to us. So, that's, you know, that's, we were just thinking that through about what would be the best time for it, not, not whether, not, not the timing you're talking about, but the timing of having an election at a time when there's a lot of voters voting. So, that was one, that was one thought.
Well, I mean, that's, that's, it's your opinion and the city manager's opinion, but I would challenge you if we hold it in May to go out and sell it to the voters, to bring those voters out to vote for it. That's my challenge to the council.
Well, certainly, we want to...
Your opinion, your opinion and the city manager's opinion is well noted, but I would challenge you if we moved it to May, I challenge the members of the council and the new city manager to go out and, and sell this bond and to the voters of the city and bring them out to vote in May.
All right, any other discussion? All right, we're, the motion is to put off any bond elections until May of 2017.
Charter elections too.
Charter, and, and, and you're talking about charter elections too? And charter elections. Are you, well, is that on the agenda? Won't we come back to that? What we're talking about here is...
Bonds.
Bonds, you can come back to the other one later.
Okay.
This is bond elections. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Delarosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember McAnally?
Yes.
Councilmember Schiff?
No.
Councilmember Peterson?
All right, we will, we can slow down on that process. Item D5, consideration, discussion, and possible action on approval of an application by the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation approving and authorizing BEDC's restated and amended articles of incorporation. Mr. Kirkpatrick.
So, in your packet tonight is an application from the EDC Board of Directors to amend and restate the Articles of Incorporation for the EDC. The last time that was done was in 2008. As part of the Bylaws Committee, when we got, the committee got done with the draft ninth amended bylaws and sent them out for an independent third-party legal review, they requested, the attorney requested a copy of our Articles of Incorporation. They asked, or made the recommendation back that we needed to go and start with our Articles of Incorporation, and when you look at the, the governance structure of the EDC, it starts with the state statutes in chapters 501 to 505, which references the Nonprofit Corporation Act and us being a nonprofit corporation and having Articles of Incorporation filed with the Secretary of State, to our local governance of the bylaws, which would be the current eighth amended bylaws, or as the committee is working on, the draft ninth amended bylaws for the board to consider. What we discovered in the articles was several areas that were not in codifying, is the term that, that the lawyers use and the politicians use, in compliance with state law and the current bylaws as they're represented, and so, this brings us into compliance with how the state law and the codification that went on from Vernon statutes to the local government code in chapter 501 to 505. It updates our registered office and registered agent, and hopefully, we will not have to come back and restate the, the articles and amend the articles for some time, because it puts us in straight compliance with how the state law reads, and will put the burden on the local governance inside of the bylaws, and so, this is really a housekeeping matter for the EDC. These need, the application, the resolution needs to be approved, and then we will file them with the Secretary of State, who actually reviews these amended and restated articles, and once they're accepted at the Secretary of State's office, we can then move forward with looking at what is the ninth draft amended bylaws for the public to provide comment and for the board to consider and provide comment, and then ultimately coming back to the council. As I've said previously, the, the council really has three roles in governance for, in the, in the 505 and 501 of the local government code, and the first of those is always the approval of the Articles of Incorporation and the bylaws, the second is the appointment of the Board of Directors by the governing body, and the third being the expenditure of funds, or the approval of projects, as it's commonly referred to, in, in type A and type B laws. So, this is really just a housekeeping matter for updating the articles and bringing them into codification with state law.
I move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? And this was, Sean, why don't you step here? This was approved by the, unanimous by the board?
It was approved by the Board of Directors.
Thank you. Unanimously, unanimously, I think?
I turn your attention to page 156 for the original members of the council board.
There you go. Oh, no, oh, I was talking about the proposed change. Please call the roll.
Wait, I have...
I'm sorry. Oh, Connor, I'm sorry, I apologize. Connor?
Thank you. I just want to go to, and this is all relevant, I want to go to the Bastrop City Council regular meeting minutes of January 13, 2015, and in those, in item D5, the last amended bylaws for the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation were presented before the city council, I understand them to be amended eight, and they contained under item, I believe it was 402, language that included the following, that the membership of the board of directors shall include the mayor, and then it went on to say, provided that the mayor may, at his or her sole discretion, designate another city council member to take his or her place on the board, and provided further that the mayor may, at his or her discretion, sole discretion, reestablish his or her service on the board, thereby replacing the city council member previously designated to serve in his or her stead, as the mayor deems appropriate. In that item, during that meeting, there was a considerable amount of discussion, which culminated basically in that part of 402 being deleted and approved by a unanimous vote of council five to zero. So, you can imagine that I was more than a little surprised at the last BEDC meeting when I heard Mayor Kestelis move the following. I moved that under Article 7 under Board of Directors that we add the following, the membership of the board of directors shall include the mayor, who may appoint on an annual basis, from June to May, a city council person to occupy the mayor's seat... basis, from June to May, a city council person to occupy the mayor's seat, and the board may include one member other than a city council member who may occupy the mayor's seat. This seems to me... This... Sorry, I should go on to say that Steve Mills, when I say he thought that was going to be part of the bylaws, it was explained to the mayor by the city attorney that the Articles of Association were to track the statute, as Sean has just said. And Mayor Kestelis then said, "I withdraw my motion. I understand it's illegal for me to do what I did, so I'm never going to do anything illegal." What I want to draw council's attention to is that this is an attempt to do something that a unanimous vote of council said shouldn't be done, and doing it in a different forum. And I think it's out of order, and I think you should be very careful about this. This is what happens when people are on two boards. But for the mayor to deliberately go out to try and run in the face of a five-zero unanimous vote by this council, I think is out of order. Thank you.
Well, let me comment on that, Mr. McAnally. What the objection was when they turned that down... First of all, I'm not sure this is...
Not an agenda item.
I'm not sure it's an agenda item, but since you've raised it, I want to reply to it. Yeah, well, it's not in the... None of this is in the Articles of Association. It's going to be... Come up under the bylaws. But the reason that I understand that the council voted that down was they didn't like the idea of not making it a... At least a year appointment. So I have responded to what they said, and you know, we can... Those of us who are on the council, they can try to remember that. But Kelly was... Gilliland was the primary person that raised that issue, and it went down, I think, for what I was told, for that reason. And I was told by some people that they thought that if it was a full-year deal, that would be okay. So the way that the changes can take place on the bylaws for the BEDC is either initiated by the city council or initiated by BEDC. So I'm trying to figure out a way to, at this point, to reduce the membership on the EDC to one city council member. And that's what those two things, you know, would amount to. So I'm not sure that, you know, we're at disagreement over this. But anyway, I think it's probably true that this will likely come up or could come up when we do the bylaws because J.C. told us at the EDC meeting that it's not appropriate to talk about this subject under this orders of incorporation. So I probably shouldn't let you talk about it, but since you got up and we've had the conversation, I hope we can, you know, revisit it if we get to that point later. Thank you.
Thank you. Just so you know, I've made an open records request for the tape of that January 13 meeting, so I think that should reveal exactly what people felt. Thank you.
January 13?
Yeah, of 2015. Thank you.
Yeah. What year was that?
Twenty... Last year.
Last year? Yeah. I remember it well. And you're right. My idea was voted in.
Because if I remember right, the discussion that Kelly was bringing up says that I think you said after six months, you may want to remove somebody, and they thought they ought to have been there at least a year.
Yeah. And so that was the argument, so that's why I changed my idea.
I don't think the point of that was that we have someone nominated for a year. I think the point of that whole thing was that this was a bad idea.
Well, we all remember differently. The vote was the vote. So Sean, anything else? I think we had a motion. We're ready to vote on it.
Can you repeat the motion?
The motion was to approve the application.
The Articles of Incorporations?
I have a question. Did you find that all of these articles of incorporation were in order?
Yes. These are merely housekeeping updates to bring the articles in line with the current statutes, the current address, the current executive director. There's nothing unusual or out of line with these.
Thank you.
Let's go... Sean, since you're up, let's go ahead and go to item D7.
Do you need to vote on voters?
We haven't voted.
Oh, I'm sorry. We didn't... Oh, Kay had a question. I'm sorry. Please call the room.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Delarosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember McAnally?
Yes.
Let's skip over D6 while Sean's up, and we'll do D7, which is... Let me see what the agenda says.
It's lengthy.
Oh, goodness. Okay. Consideration, discussion, and possible action concerning the possible use, sale, offer, and our disposition by the city of the slab portion of the property owned by the city located at 921 Main Street, including but not limited to, number one, a proposal by offer from the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation to acquire the slab portion of the lot at 921 Main Street from the city of Bastrop in order to perform necessary repairs, remediation activities, and to subsequently utilize the property for purposes allowed by the authority granted to the corporation by the Texas Economic Development Act. Two, city alternatives concerning offering the slab portion of the 921 Main Street lot in conjunction with potential LGC Chapter 380 development incentives to individuals, developers, and/or nonprofit entities for use development projects to enhance downtown and benefit the Bastrop community. Three, evaluation of proposals already under consideration by the council, previously proposed or provided by individuals, businesses, or nonprofits to enhance downtown and benefit the Bastrop community. Four, provide direction to the city manager and staff to perform necessary work to establish a fair market value using a certified appraiser's assessment, including consideration of costs related to repairs and conditions, et cetera, and/or five, other issues concerning the disposition of the property. Mr. Kirkpatrick.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. I know that's a lengthy agenda item. I got a call last week from the mayor, and there were three different agenda items related to 921 Main submitted for today's agenda. When I looked at them with the city secretary, I asked J.C. Brown on behalf of the EDC to get involved. And basically, the agenda item is so wordy because it covers every option that's available to the council today. You would say it includes the kitchen sink, I think is the joke that would be included with this.
For all...
For everything that has been considered previously and everything you'll hear tonight. So the BEDC board at the last meeting, you have a copy of my presentation in your packet. And I apologize, I did not bring it on a flash drive today to put it on the screen. But basically, what we have done over the last six, seven weeks is meet with the stakeholders at the request of one of our board members and really look at 921 Main and coming up with a solution, a potential solution for the issue there and a path to move forward. Visiting with the Main Street Design Committee a couple of times, visiting with the Main Street Board, we met with DBA and Mr. Cook, as well as the Main Street Chair and staff, and had discussions with them. We've had discussions with architects and engineers related to the site that are both local and not local. I was down there today looking at it with an engineering firm that we've done some work with in the past. And really, the crust of the matter is today is there's remediation work related to that site in a couple of different facets, and they're kind of listed out in my memo. But you've got some drainage issues, as well as some structural issues, as well as you've got a fire-damaged foundation. And how do we move forward as a community in the remediation of that site? I was notified yesterday by Sarah, our Main Street Director, that the Texas Historical Commission has accepted that site into the Town Square Initiative program. It looks like we're going to be able to get a meeting scheduled with their architect next week. There is a little bit of a backlog to get their full team to start work on the project, but they believe sometime in the next couple of months that that Town Square Initiative program, that a combination of their architect meeting next week and their other staff associated with that, sometime in August, September timeframe, that we can have a feasibility, economic impact report related to that site. That program primarily looks at it from an economic sustainability standpoint and looking at it as an infill, but they're also willing to consider it as a public space. And I think the course of action to move forward, at least from the EDC perspective and what the board has authorized me to bring to council today, is an offer to acquire the site. The motion was for $4. There is a legal mechanism in which we can transfer ownership of the site, and we're only talking about the 921 Main site. We've got to look at what the alley-de improvements are. You're probably looking at 40 feet by 181 feet maximum depth on that 7,650 square feet of that site. The remaining portion of it would still be in the alley-de improvement project as far to that parking program that you already have underway back there. We really need, as a community, need to stack the TSI program with a qualified engineering firm to prepare a scope of work to begin the remediation so that when TSI is completed with their study and their recommendation, the engineering firm has also had the ability to put that scope of work together, and we can go out for bids for a full remediation of that site. All of this culminating, when that's completed sometime, hopefully this fall, with a plan to move forward. And I think that everybody needs to be open-minded and look at it from a public gathering space type of facility, as well as going with an infill development at that site. And at that time, when those two proposals with a qualified architecture and engineering firm preparing what we refer to as an opinion of probable cost for both of those, the community can make a decision. Do you want to move forward with a public open space at X cost, or do you want to move forward with marketing the site to a private developer or individual and looking at a capital investment of Y? And at that point, we make a decision. We work on projects like this and look at them going all the way to the end-use, going, if everything goes wrong, what do we do with the site? And as part of our proposal to the Board of Directors was, worst-case scenario is the EDC ends up either constructing the building or entering into a public-private partnership and leasing back the second floor for office space so that we have an end-use. If everything else went wrong, we end up with an infill building with the EDC offices on the second floor, either in a public-private partnership with a leaseback, or if we needed to, to own the building to get it filled in. The developers that we've spoken with over the last few days, they all generally agree they want to see the remediation done before they consider the site. And a majority of them would like to see the facade on the front and the facade on the back approved by the Historic Landmark Commission so they know what they're getting into design-wise with the project before they start investing their own private dollars in developing that. It's a good project. It's going to enhance the economy of Bastrop if it goes either way. I don't know what the appetite of the board would be beyond the remediation if it goes to a public space, but at least we'll have the number so that everybody can consider that. I think on the private developer side, looking at it as a project with a private developer, I think the EDC would have a lot of interest in participating in getting that site developed in that space. But this gives the community the maximum number of options, and it also takes the burden from the council of managing this through the process and puts it with the EDC board, which has the resources to see this project through to fruition within a timeframe that I think is acceptable to the council and the community. You'll see it back several times with presentations throughout of what those proposals look like, and y'all can always provide input and direction as a council. Because at the end of the day, any expenditure of fund at the EDC board, as I previously said in the last item, it comes to the council to approve that expenditure of funds. And if it's something you don't support, then the council provides direction back to the board that you don't want us to move forward with those expenditure of funds.
Gary, we put a couple of things together. One was your postponed motion from... Or your postponed idea from last time, so I want to give you a chance to weigh in.
Yeah. What I proposed last time was to offer the property to virtually anybody to put a proposal together back to us to say, "Hey, what would you do with this property? If you had the property..." Last time I was talking about, I said, you know, "We could offer it even for free, or we could just put it out there and say, 'Hey, make an offer on what you want to offer,'" and that we would have some clawback provisions. We'd have a 380 agreement that we would exchange some value for some value of economic impact to the community. And I still think that's a very viable... A very viable way to approach this. When Sean put forth his proposal at the EDC meeting to actually develop the property as an EDC project, I will say I was vehemently against that because it had a budget upwards of $3 million. And if we're going to... From an EDC standpoint, I could see a lot better ways to spend $3 million to develop jobs in this community rather than spending it to do an infill project downtown. On the other hand, I feel like if the EDC had control of the property, the EDC is much more adept and equipped legally to put together deals to be able to get a development going there. Again, I would hope that it would be either a private development or a potentially nonprofit, you know, maybe a grant-supported project for public space. But most importantly, I think, is time, that that property is set vacant with its issues for a long period of time. I just want to see it move on, get it infilled with something that mitigates all of the issues that are there right now, and let's get on with life.
Let me ask if anybody has a motion regarding anything we're talking about.
Yeah, one motion I would like to make is I think the first phase of this, we need two assessments done. We need an assessment of value for that property, and probably before that, we need an assessment of remediation to deal with the wall that is a public nuisance that is structurally unsound. And I'd like to see what the cost would be if we were to enclose that property. And so I would make a motion that we instruct the city manager to hire two consultants, unless it can be done by one. I think it would require two consultants. One, a certified appraiser that does commercial for value on the property, and two, an assessment of remediation of the current conditions that are detrimental.
Is there a second?
I would just like to add one thing.
Is there a... Let me see if there's a second.
Second. But I just...
Willie, are you seconding it?
I was going to second to have a discussion, but she... I think she did that. I think she did that.
Okay.
So, go ahead. I mean...
No, I was just going to say, I think that the remediation and the appraisal are going to be pretty connected. I mean, it might be one person that does that, so that's all I was going to say. But I was going to second that because I think that's absolutely fundamental for whatever you're going to do, you've got to get that done first, so.
You're Willie?
Mike, didn't we have a company last year going in...
Mike?
No, not an appraisal, but didn't we have a company go in and see what the cost was?
We had two different approaches. I can pull those together. We had one looking at the structural wall and the roof, and then we had another one for making it into a common meeting place. And we did have an appraisal done in 2012.
Well, what I remember was that... And I have a piece of paper somewhere in this stack here that shows where we had someone come in. I think the same people that did the appraisal work on the Opera House looked at that property, and I think it was $113,000. And then Marvin or somebody did an appraisal of what the roof and benches and stuff would cost if it was a meeting area.
You're correct.
Okay.
So can we combine the two and get... Can we go back to the appraiser that did that appraisal and say, "Hey, did you consider the condition as part of that appraisal?" Because now, before that, it wasn't a condemned piece of property, and now it is. So I think we should go back and get them to just update their appraisal considering the site conditions.
Excuse me, Mayor?
It's not a condemned...
Thank you.
Yeah, it is not a condemned piece of property.
I'm sorry.
When you make statements like that, you are driving down the value of city property. Please be careful.
Gary, is what... I will restate that. Let me clarify. It is currently an unusable piece of property because of some structural issues. It can be mitigated. I don't know what the problem is. It is... You can look at the sign. It says, "No public access."
Does, the last thing you said fit the tenor of your motion? There's, I mean, you, you said something a little different after Mike responded, so is your motion?
The motion is just to, just to get an appraisal done of the property. He's already done an assessment of the mitigation to go back to the, to the appraiser and just reflect the current conditions onto the appraisal.
And then report back. Okay. Kay, you want to talk more?
Well, to let you know, it doesn't work that way. You can't, you can't pick up a project like that. I mean, you're just kept to order a new appraisal.
Well, I mean, but Mike.
He's got, I mean, we have used this appraiser before, yes. He's gonna have to pick it up and take into account current conditions, but I think he's got the basic work and he doesn't have to start from scratch to update the appraisal, taking into account current market conditions and the condition of the building.
Okay. We got some citizens want to speak. Herb Goldsmith?
Well, I mean, if, no, if you, no, we have a motion, we have the motion on the floor. If somebody wants to call for an immediate vote, you can do that, but I'm, I've got, I mean, unless you do, I'm gonna call on these people. Herb?
Point of clarification is the motion on the floor saying that you were going to sell the?
No, the motion is to get an appraisal.
Okay. So, the only other thing I want to say was, in the packet, it did say that use the ESTAT report as a reason for turning the property into a residential or commercial or whatever as opposed to an open area. And that report, when that report was written in 2011, it was also recommending a completely different configuration of the river. And in that report, it talked about the river being called the River Loop, a series of vistas across the river valley, a trail system, river built bluff, et cetera, et cetera. So that was gonna be the meeting place that people, some people want in the open space that is there now. That was where people were gonna gather and it also recommended a quiet garden at the corner of Chestnut and Water Street. So, the reason for having that in the packet stating that it shouldn't ever be used as an open space is kind of misleading because that's not, if you read the whole report, the entire river area would be, was going to be completely changed.
Yeah, okay. You know, I've got, I'm gonna call on all y'all, but let me say, you know, because this is our process, but what, it would really be helpful if you, if you want to talk about Sean's proposal or whatever, or what the city does with the property, it might be better to wait for another time where we're actually considering that. All we're considering now is getting an appraisal. But I'm gonna call on y'all and you can speak if you want to, but that's really what's on the floor here. Brad Cook.
Yeah.
Connor McInally.
Just so I understand this correctly, we're talking about the city getting an appraisal?
Yeah.
Not, not selling this for four bucks?
It's all about getting an appraisal. That's the motion.
Well, I think that, that seems like a sensible idea, but I do want to say that, that, I'm afraid, Councilor Schiff's not the only person who's driving down, you know, the perceived value of this property. You know, Councilor Jones, Councilmember Jones at the last public meeting said, I think it's fair to say the property at this stage has a negative value. Councilmember Schiff last time said, you spent 250,000, you have something worth 20 grand. And then when we, when we were at the BDC the other day, you know, Councilor Schiff, vehemently opposed what the EDC was trying to do and again stated that it was a negative value and said he wouldn't touch the property with a 40-foot barge pole. And I think, you know, this is not how, you know, if you're gonna sell something to somebody, you know, like your car or something, what you don't do is publicly announce, you know what, it's worthless, but I'm advertising it tomorrow. That's not how you sell your property. That's not how you take care of taxpayers' money. Our money was spent on this, $265,000 and we're talking about giving it away for four bucks. So, you know, one, shame on y'all for not looking after our money and two, whatever we get for it, can you please stop driving down the price? Thank you.
Richard Smarsick.
Mayor, Councilperson, City Manager, I'm Richard Smarsick. I'm the guy who's next door to this stuff. It's my problem, right? The water leaks in. Sean has come up with a phenomenal proposal. I know we're not talking about that tonight, I'm good with that. Go get the appraisal, go find out what the value is, go find out what it's gonna take to fix it. Get it fixed. It needs a roof to solve the problem long-term. What Sean has proposed puts a roof over it. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna Cunningham.
Before I talk a little bit about what we're actually discussing here, I want to remind you guys, for the people who are at home, please make sure your mics are on when you're talking because half the time, you can't hear anything you guys are saying. So please make sure that's happening. As far as this space, I think that you're on the right path here. Get it taken care of. This space was deemed empty just about the same time I moved here and nothing's been done. Fix it, okay? I personally think it should be an open space because I've used it as such in several different events that I've managed and it was gorgeous and it was wonderful to have a space on Main Street that everybody could gather into without closing streets. But I think that you guys need to move on it and you need to move soon, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Debbie Moore?
Yes, indeed, you're only talking about getting an appraisal now. I will hold my comments to another day.
Thank you very much. Carlos Liriano.
I agree that something needs to be done with this lot. It's been talked about for a long time. We need to do something with it. We need to fix it. This lot belongs to the city. Getting an appraisal, I'm all over it. That's the first step. Getting someone to tell us how to fix it and get it done, I'm all over it. We need to do that. Transferring this issue to the Economic Development Board, I'm completely opposed to that. They are responsible for job creations. I agree with you. I agree with you, Councilman Schiff, 100%. Every other part of Austin is creating jobs. For us to have economic development with this type of investment, if they were to put this type of investment into a project that will bring an industry to Bastrop that we desperately need, we need great jobs, I believe would give us a much better return. So I'm opposed to economic development, all of a sudden getting wrapped up on a project to develop a lot that we don't even know what the end result is going to be. Take that $3 million, build your first-class, A-class office building that can accommodate the needs of our growing city would be a much better investment than to get wrapped up into a two-year project in the middle of downtown. We need to fix it. We need to get it done. The time has come for that. This gentleman needs relief. His business needs relief. Economic development being involved in this is just not, I just, I'm just opposed to that. Thank you.
I like the idea of the appraisal because everything I've been doing is trying to get somebody to do something with that lot and try to fix it at the city council level, at the EDC level. So if the appraisal will get us moving, then that's a great idea. The real idea is let's do something. Willie?
Can I ask you a question? Mike, the, the, the deal I asked you about, that AT contact, ATC contracting, I believe was the, the people that did the?
Yes, sir.
You know what I'm talking about.
They did the roof on the fire department and?
No, well, no, no. I thought those, this wasn't concerning to fix his property, any of that 113,000 that was?
Okay.
Did he, did he take care of his problem?
Part of it.
Part of his problem and, but it still needed a roof?
Yes, sir.
I mean, we're sitting here getting an appraisal, but it does nothing to remedy his problem.
Right.
I mean, if, if we're gonna sit around and, and sit around meeting to meeting, we're, if we know what it costs to take care of his problem because we gotta, we asked somebody last July of 15 and we had it sitting there almost a year now, that we know what it's gonna cost to take care of his problem, why aren't we addressing this problem before we move any further?
I'm just waiting for the council to give me direction, Willie.
I mean, you can always do an appraisal, but we gotta, we have a gentleman's been more than patient for sitting there and we know the cost to fix his problem and we're either trying to pass it to BDC or we're gonna pass it on down. This council's got a habit of just passing down the meeting, the meeting, the meeting and we're not fixing that man and his wife's problem next door. And, and that's, that's an insult to them because we know exactly, we got a, we got a quote on paper, on file in the city manager's office that tells what it costs to fix his problem.
I agree with you.
Okay, the motion is to get an appraisal for the city manager to process that and report back to us. Mike, what, July 12 meeting?
I don't know if he can get it done that fast.
As soon as possible.
Right.
Okay, I think that would be the understanding. I think y'all are ready to vote, so Anne, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
No.
Mayor Protem, Councilmember McInally?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dallarosa?
No.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
All right, we'll move on from there. On item D6, I have a very minor unofficial, sort of honorary role at the church that owns both sides of Alley A and I'm gonna, I've recused myself for just that reason and I'll turn the gavel over to the Mayor Protem.
Okay, we have a, we had an item under D6, consideration, discussion and possible action of approval of a resolution regarding the replacement of the speed bumps on Alley A. Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, sir. Did have a resolution concerning the speed bumps on Alley A and the speed bumps are very rough, too high and if we get the city to go in and put some bumps, those speed bumps in, similar to the ones that are at HEB, excuse me, to be more appropriate for that alley. And the speed bumps in Alley, and they, they need not, they need to be while the school is on vacation because schools rely on those bumps on the, on the crossing there. And I would like to do a resolution to, that the city council authorized the city manager to have the current speed bumps removed in short order by the time school resumes and classes to replace the bumps, similar to the ones at HEB. And furthermore, if the city manager determines there's only need for only two bumps at the, at the major school crossing on the south, southernmost corner and the northernmost corner. And there's one very large speed bump that really needs to be replaced because it's just, it's maintaining water that's coming from one of the businesses, air conditioning system and it's holding it water and it's actually affecting the asphalt in that, in that area.
A second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I don't know exactly, I'm gonna ask him to restate his motion, but before we have, I asked for any discussion either at the council level or from the public, I want, Trey, Mr. Joe, could you, could you come forward for a minute, please? Do you see any issues with what Mr. Peterson is recommending? Because we went through this several years ago and I know that we talked about the type of speed bumps that HEB and First National Bank had in front of those and I remember, I can't remember the cost, but I remember asking those two different organizations, HEB and People's, First National Bank, what those costs were. Do you, do you have any cost? So, were, you wanting to approve, replace the speed bumps without anybody not knowing the cost of the speed bumps?
Well, I'd like to, to direct the, the public works to look at a cost and?
And bring it back?
And bring it back.
Okay, okay. To correction, the city manager needs to bring that back to the council.
Thank you, sir.
Then I second, as clarified. We have a motion and a second to, this city manager to bring back a cost on what it would take to replace the speed bumps before school starts or during the summer vacation?
Yes, sir. Before school starts.
You got that, Mike?
Yep.
Before school? Okay.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
See what we got, D6, D7? D8, D8 was pulled. Mayor, we, yes, we're on D8, I think, or it was pulled maybe?
We're pulling that mic, right?
Right, yes, sir.
What Mr. Peterson recommended was the city manager to bring costs associated with replacing the bumps that are currently in Alley A with some new ones that are consistent with the ones in HEB or First National Bank.
Thank you.
All right.
Need to go on? Item D8 is pulled, item D9, consideration, discussion, possible action concerning a presentation from the Bastrop 1832 Farmers Market Organization that the city council reconsider the resolution passed on May 17, 2016, turning the city-owned property adjacent to the City of Bastrop Convention Center back to the City of Bastrop and under the direction of the Main Street program. Mr. Talbot?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is item D9, beginning on page 194 of your packet tonight. The City of Bastrop entered into a month-to-month lease in 2008 with the Bastrop 1832 Farmers Market, 1832 Market, so that the 1832 Market could use the leased property as a farmer's market. I had a meeting with a representative of the Bastrop 1832 Market Organization a couple weeks ago with regards to the action taken by the council a few weeks ago in which the leased property adjacent to the city convention center would no longer be leased to the 1832 Market and be placed under the city's Main Street Director. The representatives of the 1832 expressed to me in our meeting that they felt the city council did not consider all the issues in making that decision and have asked for an opportunity to present their case to the council and for the council to reconsider the decision ending the lease between the city and the 1832 Market, which is the property adjacent to the convention center. So I believe they have a representative here tonight to address the council on this matter.
So, I've got names here, but somebody can talk, make a presentation if there's somebody, is there a president of the organization here or an officer that would like to represent? I mean, start off and then I'll call on whoever's on this list.
I'm Charles Mattern, I happen to be president of the board and Erica Bradshaw is actually the market manager, one of the chief market managers and would be happy to answer any questions to you. First of all, if you want, I'll make a brief presentation.
Yeah, no, that's why we're here.
On my own, okay. I'm sorry, I probably didn't know. I started with the market four years ago and at that time, we're a local producer halfway between here and Smithville at Bastrop. We tried several markets in the area, including the producers market down there. We were approached at the time by the mayors and the derogatory people telling us we shouldn't go to the Bastrop 1832 Market because they were no good. We explored, we went with one of those markets along with getting in the 1832 and after three weeks, the market manager, and I won't mention names, disappeared so to speak. And that particular market collapsed. We stayed with the 1832 along with the, over those four years, there's been threats that the city council was gonna kick us out, that, that we were that the city council was gonna kick us out, that, uh, that, uh, we were no longer welcome there. There was a competing market on the square near the, where the juvenile services is, and, but we stayed on, and each year, the market had double-digit increases, I'm saying fourteen, sixteen percent. Our main purpose in the thing, I got disabled, my wife and son, produce fresh food, and that was our passion, to produce fresh food for the market. We did elect to go with the workers and doers, who were the eighteen thirty-two versus the dreamers and schemers that had tried to detract us from that market. Uh, we have invested all of our dues from that market to bring people in every day, and the past weekend, there were probably two to three hundred people, at least, that I served, and smiled across and, and got us fresh food to. By the way, no chemicals, 'cause the reason for my disability, I was , uh, an Agent Orange Vietnam, and I have a great aversion to putting chemicals on food. And, uh, so, anyway, that's the thing, and one of the objections I have to these mayors and the people that have detracted the market is, most of those aren't farmers that have produced crops. The, uh, people on the Economic Vitality Committee, to my knowledge, haven't produced crops. I've seen a gentleman testify through the TV, uh, to you people, and as far as I know, he hadn't produced a crop, and a consistent crop. We, we've been at the market over those four years, missed two. One, I was very ill, and the other one, uh, I can't even remember, my son was there, and I, I, I'm kind of the face, but they do all the work. Uh, I guess I've said enough in my presentation. If any of you guys have any questions, we certainly appreciate it, and the main thing I'd, my personal thing is to consider our investment, and in any business, the investment is the goodwill of the people. And our proposal, I was in the meeting with your city manager, was we don't necessarily need the market twenty-four, seven, seven days a week, just protect our business and the people we've cultivated by giving us that Saturday morning, and we can understand, the city may want other revenue for that, and we'll, we'll be versatile. And by the way, everyone that I know of that came to that market, that followed the rules, has flourished. We had, the dissenters were all people that couldn't follow the rules, and I'm sure the city and a politician, you know, that you're not gonna please everyone, but, and we went there, and we followed the rules, and we've flourished there. And so, we think that you should give us the opportunity to at least have our Saturday market and do with the property, whatever. There are opportunities for other markets. Sunday, Tuesday, if the mayor decides to raise beats, he can come at other times, or he's welcome to join our market. Just pay the dues and invest, invest in bringing the people in. Our main purpose is to serve the public, not to have a, uh, a self, "I did it," you know? And I've seen a, one of the councilmen there, and the other ones, I don't know, and I know over the years, I, a couple of years ago, I spoke to you when you were a councilman, so, but anyway, we appreciate everything the city has done for the past eight years for the market, for the past four years for me, and we say that protect the investment that we have put into this market for those hours, and we'll do everything we can to provide the people of Bastrop with quality, fresh food, and everyone is welcome to join us, and if they don't wanna join us, there's a Sunday market they could do, or Tuesday, or Friday, or whenever. Uh, thank you, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Sir, did you say you wanted, uh, just Saturday morning, or all day Saturday?
Uh, Saturday morning. Our market hours are ten to two. We need an hour or two to set up, and an hour or two to break down and clean up the place, so if you, someone else wants to use it, uh...
Mike, I'm sorry, go ahead, Kay.
And am I correct in that, Erica?
Yeah.
I would just like to say firstly, that I very much appreciate everything that you all have done at the farmers' market. I think farmers' markets are essential to communities these days, people look forward to them. And, um, the decision, I, I, at least on my behalf, that I made was not because, um, because I didn't want a farmers' market. I think I have, I've told everyone at the farmers' market, I had, I would support you until a better plan, unless a better plan came along. And to me, and, uh, I, I want to, I would love to be able to protect your investment, but there's an investment that the city has made too, and you talk about the farmers' market flourishing, and maybe in your opinion, it has flourished. In my opinion, this is a business decision, so that it will flourish further. However, you have invited other people to participate in your market. I would say that if this market, uh, is taken over by another entity, that, um, that they would certainly, it would be expected, that all of the vendors that are at eighteen thirty-two now would be welcome to be a part, and it should be an inclusive market of everyone. There's been eight years that this has been, uh, this market has been argued over, and it just, it just, from my, from my point of view, it is a, a decision to help make the market a better place and include everyone else, but please do not think for one moment that I do not appreciate, I have bought from, from you many times, I appreciate that farmers' market, and I totally support a farmers' market. It just, I think we can do it better.
Mike, um, following up on what Kay just said so eloquently, uh, is, I mean, uh, the, the entity doing it is the city, and you're gonna put the main street director in charge of it, as I understand it?
That is correct.
And so, if we does, if, if she works at a thing where Saturday is, is farmers' market day?
Right.
Then anybody, any farmer anywhere, including the entirety of the eighteen thirty-two farmers' market group, can come in and be vendor?
That is correct.
Is that, so we're trying to do both and, as far as I can tell here, so, um, is that, is there any, I mean, is that kind of our concept?
That is the concept. Um, I think what the eighteen thirty-two is saying, just so that we all understand, uh, they feel like, over the last eight years, they have invested in that, and Saturday should be reserved for them and their market, and if we wanna expand it, we can do it at other times, not on Saturday, where they have established their market.
Which would be the main day for the thing, I think.
Right.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, may I add something, or?
Sure, then I'll call on your, these other people.
Yeah, I appreciate what you guys have said. We, we're not trying to put other people out of business or anything, and everybody has the enhancement, like, uh, the Economic Vitality Committee, they say, "We want a market like Austin." Well, it would be nice to have a Ben White, uh, I thirty-five interchange at ninety-five, but Bastrop isn't ready for that. And, uh, we, you know, we need to build, but my plea is that we have cultivated these people. Every day, every Saturday, the parking lot is full of people, and all of our farmers are local, it's run by farmers, and your, uh, Main Street, uh, lady Sarah O'Brien was in Saturday before last for the first time, and in fact, she came, and she said, "Well, I've," and I, and I had a little discussion with her, I was too busy to have much, and she said, she said, "Well, I had, uh, seven years' market experience in, uh, Nacogdoches." And I said, "Oh, how much farming experience have you got?" And she's got zero. That was her answer, zero. And, uh, I guess, being an old military man, I didn't really like civilians coming in and telling me how to run a war, and I don't like other people coming in and telling me how to farm, so to speak. And it's, it's a grueling task, and we invested a lot of personal money trying to get this started when I was disabled, and I can see that, uh, money going down the drain, you know, by someone coming in and saying, "We don't have a vital, vital market."
All right, thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you, I appreciate you guys.
Before we leave, uh, I don't know how this is gonna turn out tonight or whatever, appreciate your comments, but appreciate your service to our country.
Well, thank you, thank you. I appreciate your service to the Bastrop community.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Dolores Avota Leper?
Leper.
Leper, sorry, two Es. I apologize.
He's late, I understand. Thank y'all for staying up. Uh, my name is Dolores Avota Leper, and I have been serving the community of Bastrop for over twelve years, providing fresh and local products. I have farm eggs, soaps, and candles. As secretary treasurer, I have seen firsthand how hard our vendors worked to bring food for our neighbors' tables in spite of fires, and floods, droughts, and pestilence. I am grateful that the market has been able to donate over four thousand pounds of produce to the Bastrop Emergency Food Pantry in the past eight years. I am impressed that our vendors have grown and produced and sold over one point four million dollars of food and more in the past eight years to our customers. That is a lot of tomatoes. We have much to contribute to the reva- renewal of this property. With the Bastrop eighteen thirty-two farmers' market as one of the pillars of this new venture, we can accomplish a great deal together. Please help us accomplish this goal by granting us a Saturday morning lease to hold our market in the barn. Thank you.
Thank you. Diana Tannert? Have, tell me how to pronounce it.
Tiner.
Oh, it's Tiner.
Tiner, German.
She...
T E I.
Oh, there's a D, sorry. Your on.
I want to say something that you mentioned right there, and I really appreciate what you said, thinking about us, hard-working farmers and ranchers and everything. You said, "We've been discussing this for eight years now." I'm with you. We need to nip this. It's stressing all of us out, it really is. We've put a lot of hard work into this market, we put our whole life into it, we get up early in the morning, we work, we sweat, we look pitiful, to help the community, to help our customers come in there. They love us, and it's only fair, and I don't understand why anybody would wanna come in and take this away from us, when we've worked so hard, when there's six other days of the week, that someone else can come in, and they can promote their part too, it'll help the city. We'll have our Saturday, we can keep everything the way it is. Anybody wants to come in the next six days, help promote it, bring more money into the city, I think it's wonderful. Don't take this away from us, please. We've worked hard. These people, we've had one gentleman die of a heart attack. We're like a family, we work together, we stick together, we support their family. We have another one whose husband is fighting cancer right now, we're all supportive of him. We're a family, we worked hard for this. Please don't take this away from us. Someone else wants something, there's six other days of the week. Thank you.
Thank you. Erica Bradshaw?
I'm gonna read this off first, and then I'd like to respond to some of the things that were said by Kay. Um, my name is Erica Bradshaw. My husband, Arthur, and I have been serving this community of Bastrop for thirteen years, providing fresh and local products. We started on this site when it was an empty lot, and now we're part of the eighteen thirty-two market. We're proud of that market, and it belongs to us, and we wanna keep it as such. I'm sorry, I'm upset by what I just heard. Our market is composed of kind, hard-working, and honest people. We range from a young couple bringing their baby with, to retired professionals and U.S. War veterans supplementing their incomes to make ends meet. Our market provides a financial opportunity to over twenty families. We have provided this panel with packets, with highlighting the accomplishments and the successes we have done over the last eight years. It took seven to eight pages to summarize what we have done. This is the information you should be judging and evaluating us by, not the untruthful and hurtful statements that question and sully our good name. A few people, a few people making a lot of noise over issues that have been explained and justified by our rules and by our bylaws. Issues that we explained to this council a couple of months ago, and no one had any questions about the last time we addressed you. They're minor issues, and they are paled by the outstanding amount of goodwill and the community contributions we have achieved over the last eight years. You know, council, we struggle to find a respectful way to ask you while you're accepting the inaccurate information you receive about us as factual, 'cause it is not. Please look at us, evaluate us, for the information before you, and recognize, one point four million dollars in sales and a loyal customer base of Bastrop citizens are the definition of success in a well-run organization. We are who provide the city with the destination location across the street, and we feel we've earned the right to remain doing so. So let's get to the business end of this. You will be converting this property across the street into a community event center to complement the convention center. It is a wonderful idea, and we wish to contribute towards this goal. The mayor has stated there needs to be a revenue stream generated from this valuable piece of property, and we are here to sign up to be your first leases. We are requesting the year-round rental of the business on Saturday mornings. We would be off the site by three o'clock, clearing the way for any evening rentals, and we will pay the rent in full at the beginning of each month, therefore taking the responsibility for the occupancy, even if adverse weather conditions prevent our conducting business that way. I don't know what more you could ask for. If the city wishes to sponsor another farmers' market, as others are saying, we wish you well. It is not an easy endeavor. We have struggled hard over the last eight years. You'll have a learning curve, and hopefully you will achieve success. But there are six other days of the week in which to do this. Sundays have been proven all over the country to be a very successful day for markets, serving people who can't make it on Saturday, and providing an event for the many churchgoers to attend after their services.
Ms. Bradshaw, I need you to wrap it up. It's your time, sir.
Oh, wow, I've got one more sentence. Is that okay?
Perfect.
Oh, that's not very nice of you, you know? The business proposal makes sense. It is a sound and fair compromise, and it offers the city's public with two farmers' market event days, two sources of revenue, building a goal towards a vital and active community event centers that you're trying to achieve. So we implore you to let us do this. I don't understand. You keep saying we're not inclusive of people, that is as incorrect as can be. In the packets that you received, you saw the few examples in which we don't allow somebody in. We're right to be able to do that. I'm not letting a multimillion-dollar farmer come into a small farmers' market. It's not right.
Ms. Bradshaw, we've got a rule about three minutes, and you're...
Well, everybody else has gone over three minutes, but that's quite all right. Thanks so much.
I, I don't believe that's correct. Um, we have, Robert, I'm not sure how to pronounce your last name. Fi- oh, Ficus, that makes sense.
Counsel, mayor, Mr. Talbot? My name is Robert Ficus. My family and I have been serving the Bastrop community for over seventeen years with fresh produce and local products. I am one of the founders of the eighteen thirty-two farmers' market. Eight years ago, we started eighteen thirty-two farmers' market with a vision to provide a positive, upbeat market where the customer comes first. We have succeeded in this vision. The eighteen thirty-two farmers' market is well-known in the surrounding towns as a friendly, helpful, and informative market. This is a positive reflection on the city of Bastrop. We hope to continue to serve the loyal customer base we have built in the past eight years. I will not join a different market under site as it is in poor judgment to remove a positive, growing destination market with an unproven and ill-conceived market. I respectfully ask you to grant us a Saturday rental of the building. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles Mattern?
I'm Dolores.
Okay, uh, okay, thank you very much. Uh, councilmembers, uh, any questions for anybody that we haven't asked?
I'd, I'd like to ask Sarah a question. I'd like to ask Sarah a question. Sarah, are there, do most farmer's markets have rules and regulations and codes that they go by?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. And farmer's markets are set up differently across the state. Some are umbrellaed under city governments, under Main Street programs. Some are separate 501(c)(3), and so it just depends on the organization. There are certain criteria and guidelines through the Texas Department of Agriculture to be a certified farmer's market through them and then other programs as well. I know TOFC and several other folks have specific criteria.
Are we a certified farmer's market?
1832 does have certification. What's the acronym?
We are 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation. We are a Texas Certified Farmer's Market.
Correct.
Also a member of the Texas Certified Farmer's Market Organization, which also involves other...
Correct.
And so the guidelines that are laid out are the ones that are being followed by this market? Is that right?
1832 has their own set of guidelines that they develop and they enforce. The guidelines that the Main Street program developed were mirrored after other markets and were just a starting point for the development of a new market.
So you're just developing this, we don't have, we don't have it in place yet, but we're developing it and when we get the place ready, you'll have the plan in place for...
We have a draft plan in place, but I like to tell people in my previous life, we changed those rules and regulations so often. You have to be flexible and you have to be mobile. So there is a plan in place, but nothing is set in stone. We want to make sure we do what works best for the vendors and for the customers.
And we'll be hearing back from you about what all that is down the road somewhere?
Yes, if you would like.
Okay. Kay, you have to do that?
I know.
No, I'll call it Debbie. Deborah, sorry. Hey, are you there? Deborah?
Well, my question to you is, since this is something we've never done before, what would be the harm in allowing these people to continue on Saturday and us to pick up on maybe Fridays and Sundays and go ahead and establish ourselves and see if, you know, what we can do? We've got them in place. They're working. And then let's say that you prove yourself and you guys are just like knocking the ball out of the park, you know? They might want to welcome working together with us. I don't really understand why we can't, you know, there's always a curve and I don't understand why we can't. I mean, I wasn't here when all this was approved, I don't think, so I'm sorry, I don't know a lot of the details, but it seems to me if they're already walking, why can't we learn to walk on either side of them and then see where that goes? Is that just, and then look, then we're there three days already, you know? Because I am all for using it multiple days, but is there, is that part of, is that part of a plan or is that off the table?
I'm a big believer in cooperation and I think we can all do more when we work together. That wasn't a concept that was talked about before, but after speaking with the group and attending their board meeting on Saturday, I definitely think that we can work together to come up with a solution that works for everybody.
Can I speak?
Yeah.
So Sarah, are you suggesting that perhaps we work out some sort of a period of time to look at this with Main Street and these people from the 1832 Market working together, like for three months, and then come back and revisit this?
That is up to you guys as council to make that decision. As staff, we're happy to do whatever you direct us. There are, you know, a lot of emotions and a lot of different things to consider in this and I know it's a very difficult decision and I don't think anybody wants to be responsible for harming anyone's business or anyone's livelihood. So if you want to give us the opportunity to try to work together and come back to you guys with a plan, we'd be happy to do that.
Wouldn't there be a both and on this? Is that, anybody that's associated with any farmer's market, whether it's 1832 Farmer's Market or somebody else's, every single person would have the opportunity to come in as a vendor and expand it. So we got, the more farmers, the better, I would think.
Correct.
And so there's kind of a both and situation there?
And that was the original concept from my conversations with 1832. They are not interested in participating. In a different market, they would just move the 1832 Farmer's Market to a different location.
Okay. Well, we had, Mike and I talked, Gary, let me just finish this and I'll come. Mike and I talked earlier about the fact that whenever it was that we added on to the convention center, we had to kick somebody out.
To me. We're going to go back in time. The first group that had a farmer's market here was River Valley Growers. Their location was over at the convention center because at that time, the BEDC owned the property. BEDC contributed that property to the convention center. River Valley continued to utilize that property up until we got ready to build the convention center. Because members of the 1832 and River Valley couldn't get along, they split. And so at that point, the decision was made by the council to late 1832 go over where they were and both operated for about two years until it came time to start the convention center, at which time I did have to tell the River Valley people they had to leave because they were in conflict with the construction.
All right. Gary?
Yeah, I think, you know, when we talked about the, this property before, we talked about the economic impact of what could be done on this property and we tried to put together a plan that by turning it over to the Main Street, that they could develop a business plan that would allow us to generate more income off of this piece of property. So my question is, has Main Street put together a business plan of how this property, how does Main Street Group see this property being used on a day-to-day or week-to-week basis? What is your insight on that?
I apologize. I missed that council meeting in May, so I have not been developing a business plan. I was not aware of that. We have reached out to the convention center to work together on renting the facility. We've talked to several different wedding and event coordinators as well as some folks about some special events there, but we do not have a formalized business plan developed. But we'll be happy to work on that if you so wish.
I think, I don't know if this was part of the motion, but I know our consideration, one of the considerations that was heavily mentioned was that we continue having a couple of days a week that are farmer's markets. That would be the use on those couple of days and we'd open the door to any farmer anywhere that wanted to come in and vent. And so that's the both and kind of thing that we've talked about.
And we did, we talked about, you know, in the harvest season during the fall, we could sell pumpkins on the lot. We could have hay vendors, Christmas tree vendors, do some Easter celebrations in the spring. And so there's a lot of possibilities, but we didn't want to step too deeply into all of those until we had a final decision on how to move forward.
Well, I mean, it would be my recommendation to...
We don't.
Let the farmer, the 1832 Farmer's Market continue to use the property as the Main Street Group works up a business plan for that site. And hopefully that plan includes a long-term, the long-term use of the property by the 1832 Farmer's Market. And hopefully that if you work with the farmer's market, you could try to help them enhance their business, try to make it a better farmer's market, try to look at other options, what else could be done on the days of the farmer's market. I know they've, they've been not wanting to turn it into a zoo and I can appreciate that, but I think there probably are some businesses that could be there simultaneously that would draw, would draw people both to the farmer's market because of this other entity and because of the farmer's market draw business to the other entity. So I think there are probably a lot of businesses that could use the property at the same time that would enhance each other. And I would suggest that we approve like a six-month lease for the 1832 folks to stay where they're at, to work with Main Street, to try to see how the whole week can be worked out so that everybody gains by that.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
I would, you know, I'm not, do you understand exactly how you'd work that out?
I was going to clarify that that's just a Saturday lease for the next six months.
Be a Saturday lease from 8:00 in the morning till 3:00 in the afternoon. So if you've got a wedding that's going on in the convention center in the evening, they could do an evening something next door. But I think more importantly is really the collaboration. It's working together here to say, you know, you're an asset to the community. We need this, but what else can we do? How can we embellish this to make it even better? I really think that it could be better for them, better for the city, you know, better for the entire community if we just look at, how can we develop this and spend the next six months figuring it out so that they know they're there for the next six months? They don't have to worry about it. But I think because it's a short-term lease, that they're going to be really interested in cooperating with you and you're going to be interested in cooperating with them. Try to build something so that you can come back to us and say, hey, we got it figured out. We got a great plan. Here's what we're going to do with that space. The farmer's market will be there. We've got some other things that we think will work well with it. Here's what we're going to do. And then, you know, hopefully it'll be a great thing, asset to the community.
You need six months to do that? It sounds like a pretty long period. I mean, you're working on this, aren't you?
We are already working on it. Yes, sir.
Six months and, you know, in the overall scheme of things, I don't see that. I think it's long enough period that people can work out the humps and the bumps.
There is a major event scheduled already, the Harvest Art Fest that happens the Saturday after Thanksgiving and they have a standing agreement with 1832 to participate in that. I've spoken to the organizer and told her that we would uphold anything that they would have done in the past.
Yeah, I would say with that caveat that anything that's existing, that's already planned, can continue, you know, as planned, but other than that, that the lease would be a six-month lease with the intent of really developing a business plan for that entire property, including hopefully the farmer's market and embellishing that.
And we can work on whatever timeframe you guys desire.
And let me just state one of the concerns I've got. Y'all can answer this. It, how does, so y'all said we got a lot of bad information. So is it, how can, if we've got people that want to join or just want to go, let me just say, I've got a neighbor that's got too many tomatoes. He just hit them all at once. If he wanted to come down there on one Saturday and sell tomatoes, could he do that given the line that we're talking about? I mean, is there a way to do the both and on this is what I'm talking about?
May I answer that?
Yeah, sure.
What we do for people that have seasonal... We have full-time memberships for people that are all year round and then we have a seasonal membership that's only $20 if you have something that's seasonal. We never have turned down anybody that wishes to do that. But the reason somebody needs to have some type of a membership and some type of a booth fee with us is because all of this money goes towards advertising. We've done things to fix even the building. We do pay for the utilities. We pay for the land. So we have a lot of expenses, over $1,000 a month.
So somebody could join on even for 20 bucks just for one time?
Yeah, but you know, most of them come for at least a season's worth.
Right.
But that's correct. They would do that. Our booth fees, it's $5 for up to $50 in sales. $10, 51 to 100. Over 100 is $15. It's cheap to be there. When someone wants to join us, we give them three times to try it before they even join. We don't want their money.
That's good. That's good. That's good. So we could work, what you do would work with what we're talking about.
Absolutely.
That's all I'm saying.
You know, the only thing that we've heard is, you know, you wanted to just let some independent farmer, just any day they want, come set up on our parking lot and then leave when they're not contributing to what it took us to build to have the clientele there that we have on a regular basis.
Thanks.
That's the only objection that we've had.
Gary, is your motion that we just continue the no-cost lease for that six months?
I would be fine with, I would be fine with, I don't know if with that or is that reasonable, Mike, to you, you think? Yeah, I would think that's fine for now, but let's look at the long-term business plan so that six months from now, you come back and say, hey, we've got this all figured out. Here's how it can work.
Can I ask, may I recommend...
Kay, and then Deborah.
Sorry, Deborah. Did you want to go ahead? May I ask that you all work this out and come back to us in three months with your business plan that you've both all agreed on? And let us have a look at that and then we'll see if we agree to that, that it works for another three. That way we can sort of, sorry, go ahead, Charles. Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor.
This is from a personal stance.
Can you say it in front of the mic for...
This is from a personal...
I'm sorry. I can't, I can't call on you. So I'm going to have to go to Deborah.
Oh, wow.
Okay, the council, well, I got council members don't want you speaking. I got council members do want you speaking. So why don't you go ahead and, why don't you go ahead and tell us what you had to say?
I was just going to say, the gentleman had six months. I don't know whether you understand farming or not, but right now, if you guys trash the market tonight, we're looking at ordering our seeds for the winter crops and starting them in the greenhouse because we transplant. So we're looking at planting in September, running us through March or April. So it's not just a one-shot deal. In other words, we don't go out and pick fruit and come in and without some sort of commitment, we'd just say, we got to find another...
I don't think anybody's saying that y'all can't come sell your stuff. I'd say go plant your crops, but the question is, do you have exclusive use of it or do we open it up? That's the only issue. So you can, I hope you'll go ahead and plant your crops.
Well, the other thing is, for some reason, it seems, and I might be wrong, the council has the impression that we're not an open market. We're a 501(c)(3). That's how I got in. I wasn't here when all these people farmed the market. I came in as a Johnny come lately and I followed the rules and we went ahead and I would say we flourished and we have a good crop and in defense of your new Main Street girl, she got, she inherited a bucket of worms, so...
Well, she's going, she's going to work it out.
Oh, I know she can.
You can, no, you can make a motion that we take an immediate vote if you want to.
How long are you going to keep discussing? You got a motion in a second to throw to Gary.
Whenever, if, whenever people quit talking or somebody moves the previous question and it passes. It's a two...
I just called the question in a second.
Okay. All right. Willie is calling the previous question, which is, means he's making a motion that we discontinue conversation and we vote immediately on the motion that's on the floor. It requires a two-thirds vote. It's not debatable and I will ask Ann to call the roll.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Delarosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes, and I never did get to ask my question.
Councilmember McEnally?
Could you repeat the motion, please?
It's, we're cutting off debate. It's a motion to end debate and immediately vote on the motion that's on...
Okay. Yes.
Okay, that's more than two-thirds. So the motion, can you restate the motion, Mike, that Gary made?
It's to extend or lease to the 1832 for six months, Saturdays from 8:00 to 3:00. And during that timeframe, the Main Street Director will coordinate and develop a business plan to see how the two can make the farmer's market flourish.
And honoring any existing contract for time in that space.
Yep. All right. We're clear on the motion. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Delarosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember McEnally?
Yes.
All right. Thank you all. Thank you all for your patience. Item D10 is consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding review of the fiscal year '17 budget calendar.
The only thing I want to say, I'll just make this brief, because of the time, we did not have our budget workshop last Tuesday night. There is one scheduled for next Tuesday night and then we'll get updated on the calendar at that time.
Executive session.
Item, just item number one.
Section, the Bastrop City Council will meet in closed executive session pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, at Sec. 2, to discuss the following, number section one, section 551-071, 1A, B, and section 551-0712, consultation with attorney concerning, number one, potential pending threat and/or contemplated litigation claims and/or settlement mediation, including but not limited to the following: municipal water supply, code enforcement matters, subdivision development, and/or pending... supply, code enforcement matters, subdivision development, and our pending litigation matters concerning 909/911 Farm Street and our two matters, I guess that's matters, upon which the attorney has a duty and our responsibility pursuant to the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas to report to the governmental body concerning these matters and/or any other matters posted on the agenda we're in executive session.